My cousin is actually, he's come out to his wife's friend. They're not all the same, but they're like four hundred percent. So they're their whole family, and she's seen her husband in this life now. I think I'm going to go with her, because that line of kids, just for me, it's not expensive now. I checked all the things in the bag.
Sometimes it is.
Yeah, let's look who she has to come up with and get them in, you know, this little table. As soon as we can get more, we can take this. He's the only other. Unless you're going to pull this one.
The time, Dave, notification of this meeting was published in the Edinburgh Court Press, posted on the Voltsen Board, and the office had to attach the plate with at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has arrived to attend this meeting, and reasonable campaigns submitted to this meeting will be available for public inspection, and meeting is the criteria of the open public meeting act.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Quintero, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Blansome, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Reddick, Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Rades.
Okay, swearing of professionals?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give before the board tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go with the agenda defined. On number one, I think Mr. Reddick says he has a conflict. And number two, I think Justin says he has a conflict, he just told me that. So I'm sorry, whoever said number one or two, we have a conflict, and I'm right now, and I don't have a forum, he sounds like.
The last item on the agenda as well.
Is there anybody else who has a conflict, or any other? Say no, one's with someone, number two.
The US will make the announcement that the last item on the agenda, the Edinburgh Court Press messed up and did not print that notice. So there were mail notices sent by the American made the announcements carried out December seventeenth, or anyone who received that notice in the mail will also be published in the paper. That's SD twenty-four oh eight Abraham Green.
Okay, so let it be known that number nine on the agenda tonight, SD two four oh eight Abraham Green, will be adjourned to the next public hearing, there will be no further notice of this adjournment, so please, everyone in the public be advised.
It will be published in the newspaper, but there won't be any further mailing of the notice.
That's correct, thank you.
So we can continue with item number three, which is SD twenty-one seventeen, it's an extension of a previously decreed major subdivision, we do not have a review letter, so if I have to change.
Okay, who said number three?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mary Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, Maya Rose. This application was, it's a major subdivision, it's really five lots, it's owned by three different owners, and there was some complications in getting the three different owners together on the same page, which is the reason that this has dragged out to this point. At this point, the developers' agreement was prepared and filed, the homeowners association documents have been prepared and filed, and, Joel, I'm even sure one of them has been posted, so where are we up to on this?
Because of the time it took.
Before we begin, I'd just like to swear you in.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Because of the time it took, our sewer approval actually lacks. Joseph Peshua, KBA Engineering Services, Mass. Fund.
Before we begin, I'd just like to swear you in.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Because of the time it took, our sewer approval actually lacks. Joseph Peshua, KBA Engineering Services, Mass. Fund. Because of the time it took, the sewer approval actually lacks, we have to update that in the American Act, and we're in the process of obtaining the bonds and that, that's why that hasn't been filed. Can you fire actually?
And just to be clear, there are like three or four different owners here, there was some disagreements between the parties, and they've all been resolved, and like I said, the line was posted, the developers' agreement was drafted, it was reported, the H.R.A. documents have been recorded, I guess we're just waiting on this, on the renewal of this overall.
Process wise, we would ask for one year, since we expire in June, so six months from this meeting, as I knew today, so we would ask for a one-year extension.
A year goes from June, and the year goes from three.
The year would go from the end of the prior expiration of the protection period, so that would go from June to June.
So that would lead to a six-month extension, as far as the board's concerned, it's another six months, which should be more than enough, right, Joel? Yeah, we're confident that should be enough for us.
So we have a motion, Mr. Meyer, move, Mr. Blansome, seconds, roll call.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Blansome, Mr. Hertzel.
Yes.
Mr. Reddick.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
The next application is SD twenty-four oh seven, it's a minor subdivision to create three lots.
Dave, can you make a statement?
Yes, this is, this is about. Okay, this is a minor subdivision on the, I guess, the corners of Marlin, Salem, and Coral, in the R twenty zone. And first, actually, we have to deal with a submission waiver for the location of existing proposed septic and wells. And the development plan shows a future sanitary sewer being constructed by others, so Mr. Peshua, can you give us testimony on what's going on there, whether the minor subdivision is going to be contingent upon that sewer line going in, or if you're going to actually do septic systems in the meantime?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, Joseph Peshua, KBA Engineering Services, Mass. Fund. We have to have a minute here for any questions, but the proposed application indicates for minor subdivision, taking two lots, creating three.
Joe, that's just a submission waiver.
So submission waiver specifically speak to the sewer, we do show a proposed sewer by others, we have analyzed the septic in the area, and we are able to service the center, the proposed lot, the septic, if necessary, so should sewer not be available, we would service it unless septic.
Okay, so the board will have to act on the submission waiver right now, we're not showing any existing proposed septic systems. You recommend that we have an offer. You can grant it because the fact of the matter is, you can't go forward without that approval from the Ocean Drive Board of Health, so it's really not going to affect the board's decision.
So with the other motion going, I'm with, Mr. Meyer, seconds, all in favor, on the highest high.
Okay, onto zoning, the application requires barrios for lot area, all lots will be, all the proposed lots will be fourteen thousand nine hundred thirty-three square feet, whereas twenty thousand square feet is required. And there is one design waiver that is required for providing street trees along Marlin, and we recommend, now, if there's a hedge along Marlin, however, you can put a street tree north of the hedge, and we recommend that that be done, and therefore, you wouldn't have to grant a design waiver if the applicant agrees to do that.
With no objection.
Okay, so basically, you have just a lot area, barrios that's packed on, and I don't think there's anything else that you have, or required to give testimony of, but give a description to the board, so they know exactly what they're voting on.
So as in, as I was going to say, the proposed project between Marlin and Coral, essentially, everything runs on Salem, it's two lots, we're looking to subdivide into three, the lot areas will be fourteen thousand five hundred thirty-three square feet each, all the lock widths apply, coverages setbacks all comply. The barrios system, random, the C two criteria, those purposes of the act are promoted to promotion of general welfare, establish appropriate population density. Township master plan indicates a, that the two thousand and seven master plan examination report is still valid, continue to effect planning and zoning decisions in the township. Two thousand and seven's report specifies their housing, containing diversity, the type of character of their housing, promoting opportunity for private residential communities, and providing housing opportunities for all groups, family size, and income level.
Sure, are there any lots in the immediate area the size of like fifteen thousand?
We've actually gotten a couple of projects approved at fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, specifically two projects at Parkland South Street in the neighborhood, that are fourteen thousand five hundred. One is very recent, from last year, it was maybe two or three years ago, so the R side, South Street is, I believe, two blocks north of here. There is, you know, patterns of this type of development in the area, this allows for tighter community, the advocate certainly speak to that, that the neighborhood is supportive, redeveloping this, there's two older homes there, that they're going to, that, that ending Salem to South End, provide the opportunity for a new home in the south.
I'm concerned that the more recent board members, I don't know if it's Cal. Will you say exactly what is the board member's name, Mr. Cal? I want to be tolerant. There's nothing to show on it, there's nothing in the area this size.
So the negative impact, we must maintain management of the public good, not at a character with other properties in the area, the residential use of residential homes, in my special opinion, the board can't grant the barrios request.
The finished piece of reporting can't be read.
We reviewed the report, we have no objection, the, there's one item in the report asking for soil pouring at this time, we would request a waiver on that, and we would do it at the time that we go to construct the one home.
Is that okay with you, Dave?
I agree with that, yes.
Just for education, so we're going from R twenty, between twenty thousand to fourteen thousand and change, why isn't this a zoning issue?
Minor subdivisions are not subject to fencing, so a minor subdivision regardless of how small you make a lot, is a kind of a.
So if you came and said I want to build on seventy-five hundred square feet, in theory, we can.
It's still a minor subdivision.
You're not going to get it.
Yeah, we're coming at that, for any minor subdivision regardless of size, they find it. Any advocates here, as well as speak to the application with those.
Many of the lots in the area could be divided as.
Essentially, it's only those ones that have that additional property, all the other lots are elongated, there's a number of lots in this area that are five lots that were approved years and years ago, so there is a pattern of additional subdivisions, obviously, quite. We're kind of around the corner now, but I would say essentially, the eleven fifty-nine point oh one block, and the eleven fifty-nine point oh three block, really the only other one that have this layout. I don't know the exact positioning of those homes, if those types of subdivisions would be able, if those young lots had a particular layout.
And if you're proposing to work sidewalks on all Marlin, Sable, and now?
We'll try sidewalk, curb, repair, whatever.
Any questions for any board members?
We have, we have two questions.
Yeah, can you please raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you please state your name for the record?
Keyman.
Stop spelling it, I'm speaking to the.
Yeah, I'm DA, I'm DA, I'm DA. I'm sorry, I live in Alber neighborhood, so I thought all these people are my friends and neighbors, and so people specifically on Salem and Coral have, actually, it was their idea that I should do this, because they don't have anyone, if they want a sidewalk, they want a little more development, and they're afraid of just more and more schools coming to the neighborhood, so they keep with the idea they're actually supposed to come, but because we're so early on, they can't make it till April seventh thirty, to show support, and in terms of the other area, other place in the neighborhood, there aren't really any, there's not a lot of this that's going on because of the way, pretty much only blocks that could be is South Street and Old Street.
Thank you. I would roll call to the public, anyone else the public would like to be heard in this application, please come forward, say no, close the bubble, no more motions. Okay, Mr. Meyer approves.
I'm going to second motion, because I think these lots worth a half thousand square feet, I think it fits perfectly to the neighborhood, Mr. Mayor's, that's the one regarding the rest of the neighbors, not the same, thank you very much.
Mr. Blansome, seconds, I'm roll call.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Blansome.
Yes.
Mr. Reddick. Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Sure, we can hear number two?
That's attorney, it's a conflict.
Oh, there's a conflict, okay.
That is a conflict. Number two is a conflict.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Move over then?
Yeah.
SD twenty-three forty-four, from a sit to a house in Coral, I apologize, there's a.
No.
I was going to say, but there's not. This is the major site plan for a school that's going towards a.
Actually, I think we're going to switch to the one I have, because our engineer, one wants to get a point.
No problem.
Sorry, Brian, we're on the next one.
We're going to take the big, the big named one.
Yes, I'm trying to pronounce it.
This is, Mr. Hertzel was trying to coach me earlier today. Give a couple of that.
I think it's congregation, Oris Law, Sabah Khadija Division, Inc., division.
So this is, this is actually two separate applications, we'll have separate voices for them, the first is a minor subdivision to create three lots from one, the second is for a site plan for a synagogue on one of those lots, this is located on County Line Road East, near the end, and on its side, which is in development.
Are we doing it together?
I think we should do them separately, yeah, so we'll take the minor subdivision first.
Yeah, the reason, okay, the reason for that, this is a minor subdivision to create three lots, and if you look at what, in the center lot, now, between, it's going to be for synagogue, the other two will remain vacant at this time. And what's happening here, the latest plan shows that the proposed lots will all be irregular in shape, they'll front the county line road east, the westernmost lot, which is on the top of the board, will be under fourteen thousand square feet, the middle lot, where the future synagogue will go, will be over nineteen thousand square feet, and the easternmost lot will be about seventeen thousand square feet. Only existing lots on there? One, there was one, there was one large lot right now, which is, if you look to the board to the left, it shows the Old Hills subdivision, and that, that large lot was left for future development, and that's the lot that's being requested for minor subdivisions, and I guess, I guess the question that needs to be addressed is, why not a conforming residential lot, a larger lot for the synagogue? Because this subdivision creates not only a line area variance for the westernmost lot, but all the lots need width variances, and the requesting aggregate side yard variances for all lots of twenty feet, where normally twenty-five would be required. Now, what is also important, the synagogue lot in the site plan later, also will need separate variances beyond just what the subdivision is, one of them being for off-street parking, so if, if the minor subdivision isn't approved, you really can't go forward with the site plan, the site plan and application next.
I should have some feedback for this one. Would you like to see an application before you call them?
That's fair. Right, you want to see both.
I think they should still be presented separately, and then.
Mr. Chairman, before we can have a meeting.
Oh, one last thing, that's for the zoning, the only other thing, there is a design waiver because of the shaping of lots, their irregular shape, and the lot lines are not parallel to the east county line, however, that's an acceptable practice, because the lot lines are all perpendicular and parallel to the other lot lines in the subdivision, so it's actually a good practice what they're, what they're doing, and this also gives us testimony on if any other design waivers are required besides that one I mentioned.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mary Weinstein, on behalf of the applicants, congregation, Oris Law, Sabah Khadija Division, Inc., that's a tough one, Mr.. My recommendation would have been to kind of hear them, hear them somewhat together, and like you said, the board members usually prefer to hear them together, certainly, they need two separate motions, but it's up to the board, however you wish to proceed on this, just to explain and give a little background, some of which Dave did a good job on, there are in fact two applications here, the first being for minor subdivision of the one existing lot that you can see on A two, in orange, which contains roughly one point two four acres, which we are asking to subdivide into three proposed new lots. One of the questions that Dave proposed is why are the lots these sizes, and why can't you just do two lots and make them conforming, and the answer to that is. you just do two lots and make them conforming, and the answer to that is that this is part of the Emerald Hills subdivision, the builder owns this land, the builder is not willing to sell us more land than this piece that is being proposed for the shul, um, there is a contract to sell this piece of land, which is subject to the approvals to be obtained this evening, that is the reason. Once the subdivision approval will be obtained, assuming that the board agrees favorably, then we're also requesting preliminary final site plan approval to construct a brand new synagogue on the middle one of these three lots, which is the lot that would be known as proposed lot seventy-three point fifty-eight. The two other lots would remain as single-family lots upon which single-family homes would be constructed, um, this is, as I indicated earlier, part of the Emerald Hills developments, these lots are conforming with most of the lots that are in the Emerald Hills development, and certainly our engineer and planner will provide testimony as to why the variances that we are requesting, um, are justified. Um, as far as before, not, not, I'm assuming the board does not want to hear the shul application at this time, the only thing I do want to point out is that there will not, we are not requesting a parking variance for the shul, um, the simkhol hall that is, that is listed in the basement is the architash hall is for service use only. There will be no outside parties in that simkhol hall.
The schedule says it'll be in the twenty-seven blocks, there's only twenty-four.
So, we're, so, let's, let's, let's have Brian sworn, and we're gonna explain that, but I think that's actually a pivotal piece of information, um, that the board probably wants to hear before they can vote on the subdivision, so, if I could ask that, Brian sworn.
Just one second, please. Dave, you want to go through the second report? If you want that way?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call it.
Just go to Brian.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimonial given before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Clonery, I'm a purely licensed site plan engineer professional.
We'll go through the second report.
Yeah.
We get to do the comments of both of the managers.
Yep.
Make it easier.
Okay, for the, uh, for the site plan, we're just gonna go, uh, on the middle lot of the proposed subdivision, the project does need some, uh, submission waivers, which you have to act on, um, first one is, uh, information within two hundred feet, uh, we can support that submission waiver because there is already enough off-site topography for the proposed design, um, another submission waiver is from completing profiles for proposed utility layouts, um, we can accept that as long as, uh, proposed drainage profiles are completed as a condition of approval, because our review notes an inadequate cover on the proposed stormwater system. And the last, uh, submission waiver is for an environmental impact statement, that can be supported because the, uh, environmental constraints on this, uh, site were addressed with the Emerald Hills subdivision, which is, uh, basically being constructed.
We have a lot of all, that's a regulation on the waivers. Basically, granting all the waivers.
Right. Ready?
No, it's not granted yet.
Oh.
The board members would like to have an application.
Oh, the, the rest of the?
I'll stream one later, we have to.
Great. Okay, for the, uh, for the zoning, uh, project is located in the R fifteen zone, the, uh, what needs to be clarified, um, as I mentioned, by the subdivision, they were requesting, uh, the, uh, aggregate side yard setback variances of twenty feet versus the combined of twenty-five, and what is not clear and has to be clarified at this point is whether they're requesting a setback variance for a single side yard, because it appears by the plan that, uh, the ten-foot side yard setback may be violated. Also, um, the number of parking spaces would require a variance, um, twenty-four parking spaces have been proposed, and by the sanctuary size that's proposed, twenty-seven are required. They've already given testimony that, uh, there'll be no catering facility for the simkhol hall, so that does not have to be considered. And the last, uh, variance would be from, uh, perimeter buffer where, uh, twenty feet is, uh, required and, uh, they're not providing a twenty-foot buffer.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, before we get started, I, I just want to ask Mr. Clonery if these exhibits have been provided to the board before today, or if they need to mark?
No, I, I was just gonna mention the exhibits. I have four exhibits, and I have one, the one in the upper right corner, uh, is, uh, the minor subdivision map that was submitted, it's, it's March of day one, and it shows the subject property outlined in orange, with the pink would be the subdivision lines to break it into the three lots that was discussed. Eight-two, uh, I would call a per count map, uh, is, uh, a copy of the Emerald Hills subdivision, and all the lots outlined in blue are lots that are less than thirteen thousand square feet, so the, this, it's a, uh, R fifteen zone, uh, but twenty out of the thirty lots in, in that subdivision, our neighbors, are less than, uh, thirteen thousand square feet. Our average lot size exceeds fifteen thousand square feet, the ordinance requirement. We have one, uh, lot at thirteen eight fifty-nine, I believe it is almost fourteen thousand square feet, because of the lack of depth, the other two lots exceed the ordinance requirement of fifteen thousand square feet, uh, and as, uh, Mr. Renner indicated earlier, Mr. Pekel always wanted to see it clearly prominent and highlighted what other lots in the area have similar relief granted, uh, and, and why this would fit into the character of the neighborhood. Uh, A three is just a copy of sheet, uh, fifty-seven of the tax map, which doesn't really provide any more information than A two, but just I always bring a copy of the tax map in case somebody wanted to see it in there. And A four is a copy of the site plan, which shows the proposed, uh, uh, building with the proposed parking. Uh, Dave had questions, A about the side setback, uh, we, we represent, we're not asking for a side setback variance, it will be a minimum of ten foot on each side, uh, the architect's plans show the building a couple inches bigger than the site planned it, uh, both plans are in resolution compliance. Well, the, the ordinance requires a ten on each side of the combined twenty-five. As part of the minor subdivision, we're asking for consistent with the Emerald Hills subdivision, uh, ten and ten, the. Yes, it, it, it is a variance for the combined.
There's only a variance for combined, but the single side yard setback would be in that one, wasn't it?
Right, uh, additionally, with respect to the parking, uh, there's been, uh, difference of opinion on how you calculate the parking, I'm not gonna go into how it was calculated, we're gonna agree with, uh, Dave, uh, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna reduce the size of the simkhol hall to just under, uh, two thousand square feet, the sanctuary, the sanctuary will be reduced to just under two thousand, uh, square feet, and then you require one space per hundred square feet, so we'll require twenty, and we provided twenty-four. Once you go over that, the, the way it's currently calculated, we multiply everything times one point five, so, uh, you, if, if that bumps it up to twenty, twenty-seven required, uh, we're providing twenty-four, and we're, we're indicating that the sanctuary will be reduced so that, uh, it, uh, there, there were no parking relief measures.
So, do we have A four?
Uh, A four was submitted with the application. That's not, that's not part of the minor subdivision, it's two.
That's the, that's the set of plans in your stash.
That's the next.
Well, listen to both.
Listen to both before we vote.
Listen to both, I think we're all listening to both. Because the all variances of this application, we'll see before we. So, uh, so Brian, basically, you're down to one variance, right? One lot area?
Well, we're down to a lot area variance for one of the lots, thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty-nine square feet, where fifteen thousand is required, but we're consistent, we're, we're actually exceeding the norm of the neighborhood that we're adjacent to, and, and usually there's some sort of expectation that applicant, an applicant will be entitled to the, the norm of the neighborhood, it's similar to the, uh, prior application that we had on Albert, there was a lot that, that was undersized to make sense. My testimony is that this lot is undersized, but it's larger than twenty of the thirty lots that were approved in any subdivision, and the average lot size, uh, exceeds it, and, and the reason for the, the size, uh, the request on this is the particular geometry of properties where that, that will now have the desire to create a lot that'll provide a shul, uh, for the neighborhood, uh, and, and still, uh, provide something that makes sense for the developer of the property, uh, to utilize the property.
So the bottom one is the school, the middle one is the shul, what's the top one?
The bottom one is residential, there'll be a house that'll be setback, and, and it's an narrow but deep lot, so, being that it's on county line road, it, it's not the most desirable place, the, the depth of the lot allows the, the house to be setback far enough that there'd be some, uh, separation from the busy road, the middle one is a, is the shul, and then the, the top one is another residential lot, uh, and, and again, that's a, a pretty deep lot that can be setback and, and comfortably provide residential house. Obviously, these are probably the two least desirable residential lots in development, at the, the time this development was done, there was an anticipation based on a, uh, prior ordinance that some retail could be done in this lot, uh, that ordinance was invalidated, the applicant has, has now comfortably agreed with the, uh, the shul, so that a shul will be provided here instead, uh, with two residential lots, one on each side. The good thing about that is we talk about the buffer relief, well, the buffer relief is going to be two, uh, new people who are gonna know what's there, uh, and, and it'll be the type of people that'll buy this, or the type of people that are okay with being on county line road and being next to a shul.
They want some of the shul, want this small property, and make it legal, or legal?
Well, if, if the, the, uh, number of parking spaces is legal, everything other than the, what's consistent with the prior, uh, subdivision.
To use the shul only because there's a hole, like a regular hole, if you have a small property, thirteen thousand.
Well, it, it, you know, the, the, the thirteen thousand, the one which is, uh, above it, is a, is larger than the majority of the lots in these wanting development. Thirteen thousand square, a lot later, it's a pretty big lot, but if the board approved twelve thousand square.
That doesn't bother me. It won't be something, I'm probably, the, 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 if you.
They all want this to be a simple operation, this is really a neighborhood shul, this shul was in the Emerald Hills development.
So, what would you say?
Correct. Correct, and no free sale.
Risk, no.
Risk, if I miss one, no, risk.
That's a question, Dave could be a person about this, but in this.
If I miss one, no, risk, probably, would be my guess.
So, that's a problem, because people are parked on campus.
People are parked at campus.
You can't talk to the audience, sorry, if we do this.
Even if, I just addressed what you want to say, even if the car park is canceled, we don't want any parking.
Correct, and, and, and what's been represented to me is that the rabbi of this is self-funding, he lives right behind it, he's got no interest in, uh, renting out the mall or outside parties.
Well, we're not worried about the rent, we're worried about, uh, people that drive in campus, when people are parked.
Right, well, as long as you're agreeing that it's not gonna be any function during the week. Yes.
At this property.
That mall is not gonna be used, really. Yes. Again, first, and, 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 and that, that's the rabbi's intention as well.
Yeah, the same thing.
So, the, the total tract is fifty-four thousand and ninety-two square feet, so dividing that by, like, three for the three lots, it, it would be a, an average of eighteen thousand, uh, square feet per lot, which exceeds the zone and exceeds the, the area of the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fie, just a minute, gentlemen, please, I'm sorry, thank you.
Uh, now, you, you can see on A one that there's also a thirteen-foot strip that's being dedicated to the county, uh, for roadwaying purposes, uh, so, this applicant is giving up, uh, a thirteen-foot strip, which is roughly thirty-five hundred square feet of property, so when you take that thirty-five hundred feet of property out, the average lot size comes out to sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven, which still exceeds the ordinance and exceeds the, the norm of the neighborhood, uh, that the, uh, application fits within. Uh, looking at, uh, the report for the minor subdivision, uh, I, I have one indicates that, that they're permitted uses, I have two, uh, specifies the relief that we need for the one lot, lot seventy-three point fifty-seven, where thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty-nine point zero four square feet are required, and fifteen thousand is required, uh, and the minimum lot width, uh, all of the lots require minimum lot widths, the ordinance requires a hundred foot, and, uh, we have widths of eighty-five, seventy-six, and sixty-two. Again, that is consistent with the, uh, the adjacent Emerald Hills subdivision, I highlighted the lots, uh, that are, that are in that same, uh, range, the smallest one we have, I think it was fifty feet, lot, uh, seventy-three point four-two is fifty-six point five-three, yeah, that's the smallest, fifty-six point five-three, lot seventy-three point five-one is fifty-nine point one-two, lot seventy-three point fifty-two and seventy-three point fifty-three are sixty-six point three-nine and sixty-four point four-seven respectively, and, and you can see that the, uh, design of this neighborhood, the norm of this neighborhood is to create lots at fifteen, uh, hours that are intended, and I think this application continues along with that. With respect to the justification for the variances, there would be C two variances, uh, and, and the justification, then the master plan of two thousand and seventeen on page seven, uh, indicates encouraged growth and development in appropriate location and consistent with established land uses, this is certainly consistent with the established land uses, uh, it's consistent with the approval that was recently granted across the street, uh, and it's an appropriate location for a shul, and, and, and the utilization of the lot allows the shul to acquire a property that, that fits the, uh, neighborhood shul that's required, the municipal land use law, NJAC forty-four fifty-five D two under the purpose of the act, will encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use for development of all lands in the state, in matter which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, it's my testimony that this does this, the shul is inherently beneficial use, this application will allow the shul to have a piece of property, uh, adjacent to the, the rabbi, uh, and, and, and the appropriate location for use by the, uh, the, the neighborhood, uh, and, uh, E of that same NJAC forty-four fifty-five D two says promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment, and, and this certainly does that, the population density, uh, is, is less than what's permitted by the ordinance, it's, it's, uh, less than the, the norm of the neighborhood that's there, uh, so for C two variance, we have to show that it relates to a specific piece of property, the geometry of this property is very specific, the location of it is very specific, the, the location of it with respect to the remainder of the development is also very specific, we have to show the purposes of the municipal land use law, which I just read, would be advanced, uh, we have to show that the variance can be granted without substantial, uh, detriment to the public good, uh, and, and as my testimony, that there is no substantial detriment to the public good, this is an application that utilizes this property to the, the best available method, uh, we have to show the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning order, and since it, it complies, uh, with lot areas, when you look at an average lot area site, that it, it complies with the norm of the neighborhood, it's my testimony that it does that, and then we have to show that it bet, the benefits outweigh the detriment, and, and my testimony is that there's, uh, the benefits of it are allowing the shul, allowing development of residential units, it, it allows it to be setback from county line road, and it certainly meets that, uh, criteria, um, with. With respect to the other comments in the report, Dave requested, there's additional design waivers requested, and we're not requesting any additional design waivers. The roadway easement will be clarified. There are a lot of lines going on there because there were prior gate tree utilities, there were prior... This one was originally approved, granted a roadway easement. They're not looking for an additional 13-foot roadway easement, so that's a benefit to the county. It's a future benefit for the residents of the area. There's a comment on Number 7 that we should correct the chart to indicate the proposed maximum building coverage to be shown at 22%. And my testimony would be that the building as shown is at 22%, but that's not the maximum that we want to be limited to. If we need to change that a little, we would like to just comply with the ordinance requirement, which is 25%. And that would basically be it with respect to the minor subdivision. With respect to the site plan, as indicated, the report indicated that a parking variance was required, and we've agreed to amend the application such that the main sanctuary will be reduced in size so that we don't need a parking variance. We're not asking for any additional side setbacks. It will be 10 feet on each side, consistent with what was done in the Emerald Hill subdivision. And to the extent that the building needs to be shifted or the architecture needs to be adjusted during resolution compliance, that will be done.
If the, if the simple hall was used during the week, would you require...
We would require more parking, and we're agreeing as a condition of the approval and so rabbi's intent not to use it during the week.
Is the, the rabbi, is the owner of the project or is authorized to speak before the official?
The rabbi is not here. It's Dr. O.
Is there a rabbi who can give testimony under penalty?
Yes.
To say that is not the precedent technical under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Why not give, if the testimony of the experts is not to be used as a simple call during the week? Brian is telling us clearly that it is, is a problem. So therefore, if somebody represents the shul, you know, their testimony under penalty of perjury, that they're not going to discuss it. I imagine they discussed the high close doors. So my testimony...
And I don't think the board needed me to tell you that the shul is a central hall and be a problem. I think the board knew all of that from the start. And as the chairman says, this will need additional approval.
Excuse me, can everyone please keep it down, the audience? Thank you.
President of the corporation is not here.
The president of the corporation is not here.
Not the head of the board, or is he?
Correct. They're really, yeah, they're really just kind of...
Somebody speak on behalf of the...
They're not really, there's nobody here who can speak on behalf of me. I can speak on behalf of the, I spoke to the rabbi, but they can't, yeah, there's nobody here who can actually make that representation, but we're willing to make the representation if we go into resolution.
Who's the rabbi?
Let me show him.
Is there, is there a shul that we need?
No, there really, there really isn't, and they need one desperately.
There's no second building?
There was no second building. The builder did not provide one.
There's only a hall.
What?
The hall.
The hall is in, is in Kathy Line Manor. It's the next, it's the next development over.
That's not over.
Right, it's not part of this development. It's not our shul, and it's not part of this development.
How many people down there?
But before we, before we do finish off, the neighbors of County Line Manor who are adjacent to this development, we met with them, and they have some concerns if they want to incorporate it into the resolution, so...
How many people down there?
How many people down there?
There are initial...
There's 38. There are 38 families in the Amelto's development. Four of them do pray in the hall in the adjacent County Line Manor. I guess they're going to stay there. And there are 34 families, so I guess are looking for a place to pray. And basements, so take that, take basically 34 and another 38 on top of that, because the basements haven't sent you a place to pray as well. So there's a desperate, there is a desperate need to have a shul in this location.
The only other item I was going to touch on was I am applying with respect to the gate tree regulations, and my testimony would be the same as always, that we will do whatever is required by the ordinance and whatever is reasonable, and we would rely on the board engineers' review of that during resolution compliance. Any other questions from any board members?
I have a question. Brian, you, from what I got, you want to actually have the ability to increase the size of the building up to 25% lot coverage?
Well, we want the plan to say maximum lot coverage is 25%, which is what the ordinance provides, and we're intending to build a building that's there, but if the size of the steel gets bigger, the bricks get bigger, and it goes up from 22 to 24.5, we don't want to have to come back to the board and say we're doing something...
Okay, now, it's important the board understands that...
Yes.
That you're asking for a potentially larger bill.
Well, what we're saying is that...
It's a potentially larger bill.
Yes, but, but minimally, minimally, minimally larger, because we're at 22. 25 is the most we can go to, and there's no reason to limit it to 22 if the ordinance says you can have 25.
Mr. Faiy, just a quick question for you. Your testimony before as to why variance relief is warranted, that you were testifying as to both the site plan and the...
That was the site plan and the, and the minor subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, Rashar actually arrived, so we can have him affirmed, and we can certainly have him answer any questions that the board has.
Sir, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, I think through your last name. Your last... S.C.H.A.R.F.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rashar, I think the board had some, had some concerns in terms of the parking. They raised an issue that they don't want parking on County Line Road, and because of that, they were questioning the use of the simple hall. As the owner of the shul, can you represent to the board that this simple hall is going to be for Shabbos use only?
I'm not the owner of the shul. This is a congregation, the rabbi, but our intention is not to have a mini factory, only to serve our community and to have the least, the minimal impact on traffic. And some of this vote is not really conducive to community use that we want to do.
Rashar, we have to understand that our County Line is a very dangerous street, and if it's open to the outside suburbs, people on the sidewalk count on the accidents. So we want to hear from you that...
One of the first things we had in the meeting was that this should be a community shul, not a SATF or a mini factory.
Unless, unless they got the mini factory.
No, it's, we're doing a make, I don't think it's, I don't think we can do that.
The simple hall can be used on Shabbos.
Only for Shabbos, you know.
And if the rest of the bris, it should only be for people down on the shul upstairs when you're running outside, outside person. People down there have the wonderful boxes.
Correct.
Mr. Faiy, is that an answer?
If Rashar was saying that, it will be it.
I know, he's a good guy. Thank you.
Not always. No, I'll tell you, I got a, I got a call the other day from a friend of my wife. She lives on Oak Street or something, and there is a shul that has a simple hall, and they promised on Stack of Bibles that there will never, ever be simple houses, only on Shabbos. And they have a bris, and brises after Dobbly. They got, there's not enough parking. There's cars on the left, and there's cars on the right. And then the buses try to come through, and they have, they meet head on because there ain't no room, and then all the people line up behind, they're coming off of Route 9, and it's a catastrophic failure of the planters. So what we're trying to do is just make sure that even people with the best intentions are not creating problems that they didn't anticipate. But if Rashar says he's not having any simple house other than on Shabbos, I believe him.
We'll be happy with that.
Okay. But Mr. Faiy, see, when we do have future applications that have this issue, I think it's important we always have one of your clients who's authorized to speak, who's willing to get up in front, swear under penalty of perjury, what you're representing.
Affirm under penalty of perjury.
They can affirm under penalty of perjury.
I'm just going to Rashar. Rashar, I have a question. Do you live right in the immediate area? Do you live in the immediate area?
I, I'm on a contract.
I thought somebody said, I don't know if it was my side that said that.
Yeah, we currently, I have a contract.
Oh, okay.
Anyway.
He said he lives on Rose Hill. I heard that.
Once you're living there, you're not going to want the shelter.
I currently live on Rose Hill. To go to Ishida, I suffer from many of the things that Mr. Stern, Mr. Stern spoke about on his candidacy. I'm keeping a really concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? I'm broken to the public. Can you imagine the public might be heard on subdivision, please come forward. Anywhere for the shul? Okay, sign normal clause of the public.
I do need to put on the record those, the stipulations that we made with the neighbor. So we did meet with the neighbors in County Line Manor, which is the element adjacent, and these are the items that were already incorporated into the resolution. An eight-foot vinyl fence will be installed along the back and side of the building. The applicant will plant green giant trees along the back and eastern side of the building. The windows facing the east will be frosted to ensure privacy of the neighbors. And the lot, Lot 73.59, which is the lot that's on the east side of the subdivision of the shul, should remain residential and should not become a parking lot now or at a later date. So that is a request from the neighbors that specifically that that lot should never become a parking lot.
You agree with it for coming to the board?
We had to present it to the board. I told them the board might not be so happy with that, but that's what the neighbors are requesting.
Thank you. Okay, then I think we need three motions right now. One of the waivers, one on the subdivision, one on the subdivision.
Oh, you think it's easy, boy. I'll say it.
Can you have all three together, prove that...
You gotta do the submission waiver first.
Okay, so I'm, ask for a motion on the waivers.
I'll move it.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to the subdivision right now.
Yes, chairman, I think there should be a vote first on the subdivision and then on the site plan.
Okay. I'll move the subdivision. Mr. Fazal moved, Mr. Meyer, second overall on the subdivision.
Mister Stern?
Yes.
Mister Fensman?
Yes.
Mister Hertzell?
Yes.
Mister Reddick?
Yes.
Mister Myers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I want to ask for a motion on the site plan. The only thing I want to add, whatever we spoke about, everything that you incorporated, and that the shul will be under 2,000 square feet.
Correct.
We shouldn't have variance on parking, and that the simple hall will only be used for Shabbos. Enough outside view.
And even if the building, even if the building is made bigger based on the 25% lot coverage, it should still not put any variance upon it?
On the site, the main sanctuary, set aside.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion then.
I'll say it.
Okay, Mr. Fazal moved, Mister Stern seconds. Well, go please.
Mister Stern?
Yes.
Mister Fensman?
Yes.
Mister Reddick?
Yes.
Mister Myers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mister Fensman?
Yes.
He called for a second. It does look like we can have a court, maybe they speak on the mic. So I'm going to ask our attorney, I'm going to ask you, Mister Reddick lives in the Jersey Hand, not in this section, in the other section. Is that a conflict or not?
The problem is Mister Reddick is employed by the First Government Bank, which I'm the director of, says in a relationship, which might have been a conflict. That's not my, we propose that. I would prefer not, but it is, it is, it does, it doesn't, might not, the smell does. So traditionally, for the good of everyone, we disqualified Mister Reddick so that nobody can say that I can direct them without, out of vote, even though it would be a good idea by God, but unfortunately, he's an effective man.
I can't wait to take a look.
But that's, that's the problem.
So, so we'll speak to our attorney. If there's a lead away from the site, we can listen to a trial, not, we should table it right now.
Well, the problem was, I had an idea at the last meeting where we had Mister Lantley, which I felt was a lead away of doing it with, on the board disqualified, the same way we did it. And Mister Jackson had a different opinion, everybody voted for Warren. So we have, I want, when he's not here, I don't want to take advantage of the court and put him in a position which he might rule the others to be fair to you and not put you into a bad position. But otherwise, I would do that. We, I just want to like to go on the record that we are affordable to County Board, and we spent this, this, we, your three engineers, we're sitting in on two, because one couldn't make it.
The position was separate. I think Julian told me that Mister Jackson was on his way. One way for trial, to try to talk to him.
I think that would be...
I have a problem waiting, but...
I feel about last time we waited the whole night.
I, I can advise that Mister Jackson presented it as, the way 10 years ago, the board would just phone call up the zoning board members, like, we didn't say they come by, it did not seem to be appropriate that zoning board members are to fill in, that are documented complex, not just members who are confusing around. My understanding is we only have one, they need two complexes, they have a couple members around here, but it's not a complex, unfortunately.
My only question is, if Mister President said this, that's one question.
No, I want to talk about this. I'm sorry? I would not go for that. I'll find, listen to the jury here.
Yeah, I would recommend erring on the side of caution if, like Mister Fensman said, if it doesn't pass, the small test is better to err on the side of caution.
That's very refreshing.
Can we have a part of the court, but just don't vote?
Oh, can we potentially have testimony that goes off to the record or in August December to listen to at a later time and delay just the vote?
I don't think so. It's more of a floor. I'm not the attorney. What happens? There is, there is a zoning board, there's a resolution that was passed by the zoning board that allows that when there isn't enough on it. So you never adopted a formal resolution to do that, but the zoning board did adopt a resolution for that. What happens is that announced, that would be it after, and then they'll vote the following month, or file, file the dispute. So maybe that, that could be done. So maybe we should weigh about that. See if he's ready here. If he's ready here, is anyone counting on a close ears?
He will be here momentarily.
Wonderful. Very much.
So you'll speak, Mister Jackson will decide?
Certainly will.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then here, frankly, we don't expect to have any other board members attend tonight. I might have another two also. Okay. Could I ask for that to be carried to the...
December 17. There's only three on right now. I think the record tonight's been fine, December 17. The board's favor.
Yeah. We're all favor. Keep going up to 17. We're all thinking, December 17. Yes, aye. Okay, so make an announcement.
Yes, so members of the public, please be advised that S P 241 B, which is number two on the agenda tonight, is hereby adjourned to the next planning board meeting, and there will be no further notice given.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now, Mr. Jackson's here. So we can speak to him and then we'll...
You will, we go back here.
No, he's... Okay, I'll let him write a motion to him. Where we hold, number seven, number eight?
The... No, number five. We skipped over the five.
You skipped number five, and now we're good.
It's made by the board.
Oh, I thought you...
Number five, you want me to continue with that one?
Yeah, sure.
S P 2344, made by Nisenta Ahab Satora. It's a major site plan for school dorms on Chestnut.
On the occasion, put it away.
Nisenta Ahab Satora.
Just want to figure out... There's another second here, so we need it.
Okay, so Dave, would you like to go through the report, please?
Sure. This is for a road school on Chestnut Street. And the first thing you're going to have to act on are submission waivers. First waiver, there was, unless this is being submitted in the meantime, they need a submission waiver from submitting to the Yoder County Planning Board since Chestnut Street is on the county highway, is out of the digat.
Yes.
Okay, so we can knock that submission waiver off. They need submission waivers from information within 200 feet. We can support those submission waivers with the off-site features because there's enough information on the topography being provided for the design. They need a submission waiver from submitting an L O I for wetlands. The map shows a small wetlands area on the southeast corner of the site that needs permit to be filled. And as long as a copy of the submission package that D E P has provided is a condition of approval, you can accept that submission waiver. There also is a submission waiver required from stormwater profiles. We can, we can grant that submission waiver, provide stormwater profiles are provided as a condition of approval because of the high seasonal water table on the site. And also, a submission waiver is required from an environmental impact statement. Once again, if a copy of the submission package to M J D E P is a condition of approval, that will suffice in satisfying the environmental impact statement.
We have a motion to have this... Again, on favor, I...
Okay, now, to Zoni. The current, the current plan is requiring a variance from providing a bus loading, unloading area. In accordance with the ordinance, right now, the bus loading, unloading area is impeding the parking lot. And we recommend that because there's room in front of the building, that a redesign be done so that the bus loading, unloading area can comply with the ordinance. And then as far as design waivers, the surrounding streets of Lambert, Fulton, and Cordwell avenues are not being approved, and that would require design waivers to the board.
Good evening. Mary Weinstein, on behalf of the applicant, Nisenta Ahab Satora, Inc., we are here this evening seeking preliminary final site plan approval to construct a boys' high school and dormitory on the property. This will be constructed in two phases. The existing house would remain during the first phase, and the proposed school building and all of the off-street parking will be constructed. Phase two would then consist of removing all existing improvements, including the two-story dwelling, and construction of the two-story dormitory wing. As the board knows all too well, due to the growing population, we are in need of more and more schools. The question is always where to locate those schools. It is almost impossible to secure a large enough tract to construct a school on these days, and even more difficult at an affordable price and in an appropriate location. This site is an appropriate site as it is pretty secluded. There aren't too many houses around the site due to the wetlands that run through the area. And it's located on Chestnut Street, which is a very busy street, as we all know, and not terribly conducive to residential housing. We actually do have an approval, previous approval on this site from the zoning board, which granted approval for single-family homes on 10,000 square foot lots in the R20 zone. We do feel that a school is actually a better use of this property based on its location on Chestnut Street. The boys in grades nine through 12 will be bused to school. The dormitory would house the boys for the first year of post-high school studies once constructed. The school currently has grades nine through 12. I'd say with approximately 100 boys. This is a fully conforming application. There are no variances. We will address the bus circulation, and we will conform as far as the bus circulation. Before I ask to have our engineers sworn, I just want the board to know there aren't any parents that are here in the audience tonight here to show their support. I just want to point that out for the board. At this point, I guess if we could ask to have Mr. Weinstein sworn.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony I'll give before the board tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
What is your name, sir?
Glenn Myers, professional engineer, professional designer.
Mr. Myers, before you begin, those two exhibits that you have, have those been provided to the board before, or are those new?
Those are in the board's bag.
Okay, thank you.
It's not in the 900 section of the ordinance. It's not there.
Yes. Yes, you have to quit, so it's not bad to fill. It's like the most difficult thing now, you know.
Because you have a high profession. Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Weinstein. I'm just trying to come in.
No, no, it's fine.
Trying to get more members to come.
Wait, thank you.
I'm not lying, hold everybody. Okay?
Okay.
Glenn, I'm sorry. Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Just one, I think what I would start with is if you could address the bus circulation and why we feel that we do not need a variance for the bus circulation.
Based on the number of rooms and school classrooms and everything, we require 10 spaces. We had 24. The first 10 spaces, which is from the eastern end of the parking area to the handicap space, is 10 spaces. So we could take all the ones that are right now needed by buses off the plane, and we do not need a variance. We still have the 10 that the ordinance requires. We're providing 14 extra parking spaces.
Why wouldn't you make this look a little bigger?
Because we're trying to keep pavement down. You don't, you don't know what the D E P, the town, and soil erosion is doing to us with pavement. The requirements have gone crazy with what we have to do to take care of stormwater management. We're at the point of, we're going to get, we're all going to get back to above-ground basins so the township can take care of all these above-ground basins and residential developments. I know it's a little aside. That's how crazy they're getting with stormwater management in the past six to nine months. So we've had 10 spaces that we, that people can come in the two-way driveway, park, back out, and go out the same way they came in. Even if it's westerns.
How many buses?
I have room for three. We only really need two. So we could even get rid of a bus space.
115 feet, then you show the bus zone. That's room for three buses?
Right, 50 feet per bus. So we could...
It's really only two.
It doesn't work. That's two. It's 115. So 115 feet.
How do you say 115?
115.
Well, regardless, he just presented his arguing of why you should create the variance. I want to make sure that the numbers wasn't in response. Even if it's many buses, it's easy.
Well, we only need two buses. There are 100 students. Four classrooms, there's never going to be more than four classrooms. At some point in the future, there will be a dormitory. Right now, there isn't. It's a high school. The boys' high school, it's never going to have more than one. Four classes. The fifth class is the dormitory that's not going to, they're not going to be bused.
No parallel?
No. There are no parallel classes. So there really is only a need for two buses.
That's the one for keep the parking and the buses coming. How about four pages?
We'll have to, sorry, we need another fifth. We have to widen this 15 feet for the length of the school. We move the buses in and out, and out. That's the hard part. Out the other bus. And back up and pull out.
What do you have to do now? Do you want to do that?
We have to, the bus spaces are 15 feet wide by ordinance. So we would have to move the entire, we'd have to move the curb line towards the school 15 feet, provide the bus parking spaces and the maneuvering room to get in and out.
Which means we...
Almost have to widen that entire driveway another 15 feet for what we're looking at as a few minutes, 15 minutes a day. Rabbi only has five, five employees during the day for the, for the classes.
I just want to say that they don't really need the 24 parking spaces. They probably need the 24 parking spaces once a year for P T A. Aside from when they have P T A conferences, they don't have 24 employees in a boys' high school. There are four classrooms.
Let me ask you a question. On the left side of the building, you have 85 feet on the driveway to the level of the front. Why can't you shift that over?
It's just no matter what we do, we're paving for nothing.
Nothing.
It's not necessary. All I'm saying is it's not necessary. If we, if we deleted the extra parking spaces from the plane, then we would still have 11 spaces, I think I said it earlier. And two-way access in and out of those spaces. We're just blocking extra spaces at this point. And it, it's pavement that's, that's just not necessary.
I haven't seen a school today that was less than 15.
We're, we're providing extra parking during the day.
Boys' high school, boys' high school really don't need that parking.
So there's not going to be a cowl there. I know the ordinance doesn't. It said if there's going to be any extra people there, that would be a problem.
But, but that wouldn't be going on when the buses are there. I don't think it would just... It sounds like, it sounds like if you ran the variance for the, to not, to, to, to go away from the ordinance, it sounds like we're going to come out every time and say, well, you know, there's too much pavement, there's a stormwater risk, 200, 2,000. Therefore, we won't need the variance next time. It just seems like, I mean, progressives ran, ran the variance because the state has become a stormwater threat. It's not what you just tell.
There are, there are a couple of houses on there, but they've been on that dirt road for as far back as anyone in this room can remember.
Did you say there's on the other side of Caldwell, there's also a house that faces Chestnut?
Uh, yes.
So, both of those, Caldwell is a side street to them, so there would be confronting on Caldwell that would be developing it?
Correct, correct, and I think the property across the street, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there are actually wetlands that traverse over there to Caldwell, so it's not possible to develop it from Caldwell, correct?
Correct.
Where's the wetlands?
The wetlands are, are here, they're close, they come under, there's a little, there's a pipe, we have this small corner of wetlands, which we want to connect through pipes and fill, they go under Chestnut, and then in the westerly direction down towards...
Caldwell, you're saying it can't, it can't exist?
Well, you'd have to go through permitting to pave it because you'd have to fill some more wetlands.
But, I see, does the whole swat be uncooled?
None of them are developed. So, the zoning board had an application for, I think it was this twenty-nine, which was, and the Northeast Trust that was denied, but they weren't using any of these side street T, they really put everything aside.
So, doesn't the township require most of the improved, for this reason, because it might get...
It, it does, but if we're one of the people who front on it, then you can...
How does that work? So, I'm getting to it.
In this situation, according to Article Five of the U D O, this is off-track improvements. So, it says off-track improvements required, it's a condition of final waiting subdivision or site plan approval, reviewing board may require an applicant to pay his pro-rata share of the cost of providing only reasonable and necessary off-track improvements. These costs may include, but are not limited to, streets, water, sewage, drainage, easements, and easements therefore located outside of the property's limits of the development, but not necessitated or required by construction or improvement within the development. The proportionate pro-rata amount to the cost such facilities that shall be borne by each developer or owner within a related or common area shall be based on the criteria established therein, then explains how you figured that cost out.
Okay, is this the ordinance that you referenced?
So, so I guess my question is, if any of those surrounding streets are improved, will you be bonding for your half of the...
No.
If any, so, if possible, we went to township?
We will, I, I got it. Specifically, we'll talk about, about the streets, okay? And we're talking about pro-rata share, so they have to provide this money to the township, into the township's trust account, okay? This isn't a bond, this is, okay? The applicant shall furnish a plan for proposed off-track improvement, which shall include the estimated peak hour traffic generated by the proposed development. The ratio of peak hour traffic generated by the proposed development to the future additional peak hour traffic anticipated to impact the proposed off-track improvement shall form the basis for the pro-proportionate share. The proportionate share shall be computed as follows, total cost of off-track improvement times the future peak hour traffic generated by the developer divided by the future additional peak hour traffic. So, this is how you get the streets around this property improved. We go by the ordinance which requires off-track improvements, and the developer would have to provide his pro-rata share, then all gets worked out with the township committee and township engineer who works out the costs of the improvements and who was what, and that's all written in this ordinance. So, we agreed we will go by this ordinance, but we're not going to be, we're not going to provide, you know, hamper road, quarter of a road, maybe some sidewalks, maybe some, we'll go by the ordinance, and I think this is the best way to do it for this project. And I believe this is the way it should always be done for all these projects. But, we, we're not doing anything on this lot that makes us, we need to provide any access after those roads.
If you read that, if you read that formula, that formula actually said that developers charge based on the number of cars that the development is gonna be generating on those roads, which is really zero, so if you make that zero, there's nothing to pay for it. We're building a school.
Wait, I'm sorry, Miss Whitey, Mr. Limes just said we would provide a fee, now you're saying actually there's no fee because we're not putting any cars there? So, we're, so we'll provide the fee then, zero? Then we just shut them to flood?
Okay, so, but that's the way, that's the way the formula is.
That, that's the formula.
Or they could just not grant you the waiver.
But, there's no way to require, this is your ordinance, we, I testify, we'll comply with this ordinance.
Dave, what do you say?
So, so, if I understand, your point is, you'll, you'll agree to provide as a condition of resolution, your pro-rata share, basically, half the road frontage is surrounding the property?
No.
No.
Who would do that, the township?
I guess I'm confused.
I don't know.
Well, you're not doing it, I don't know who's doing it.
This is just, this is just a question of name, that they, Scott, right?
No, well, that's a design waiver, I believe it's a design waiver in the letter we're here, design waivers are required from the ruling, right away, the land we're faulting, Caldwell, Lammers. Where did this come from? Based on what?
They, they were proposing no road improvements on the three unimproved roads.
And who said we need improvements?
Because, because I'm saying that they should provide the improvements or get a design waiver, which the line says, it says, well, I'm gonna have to get a design waiver if I provide my pro-rata share. So, my question was, oh, okay, so, basically, you're gonna provide your pro-rata share for, for the road frontages?
To lay the township.
Someday, they get improved.
Do lay-up township warrants require that a developer improve roads around the developers?
No.
Who said they can answer that?
They can answer that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the answer to that, I'd have to check that.
So, why do you say it's a design waiver?
Well, that, that can be made a condition of approval, and if you're building on an unimproved street, you have to improve the street, we do that all the time, when people come in and they, they front the street, you make it on curbs, sidewalks, you build a halfway.
I said we didn't do it all the time, but they're saying that there was no requirement, that we can't make them do it.
Well, the board can impose that requirement as a condition of development.
But then it's not a design waiver, we're not giving a design waiver, just not trying to understand.
There is a section of the ordinance that's been referenced before with the township engineer, I don't know it offhand, and I can't say the language, but it does, it does come from somewhere, it's not pulled out of any...
I think a pro-rata, that's what I'm getting at. Well, the, the point I'm getting to, if this involves a payment, if this involves a payment for a pro-rata share, we can work that out later.
They just said they're, they're paying us a fair amount.
Well, it doesn't necessarily require, it's not related with pavement, based on the way this, the wording in this, in this review letter states, it looks like they're required to improve the streets around, it's not, it doesn't have any pro-rata share. No, and I'm trying to, I understand your position, I can understand where this comes from, it's more of a fundamental question than I'm asking, just, if it's not required, it should be required, and I think we should request of the township committee that something is, that it should be required, so I'm trying to understand where this comes from.
And you can try with the ordinance, the way you think it's appropriate to show the ordinance.
So, I wonder what you're trying to say, trying to what's our, that's what I'm trying to, why do we try this? And I would suggest, I know from all the years on board, if you have frontage on the street, it's a waiver, you don't bore, it's a variance, if you don't want to...
Right.
Wait, that's how many of the normal, the other way?
No, it's a waiver.
They're just looking for the length.
Whether it's a waiver or variance, it still has to be granted, it's just a slightly different standard. The standard for variance, you know what that is, but on waivers, you have to have good rational reasons for giving a waiver.
What defines frontage? If there's no roads opening on this, this gravel street, is that still frontage?
Well, based on the configuration, yes, if, if it's a, if it's a right-of-way, and they front on it, it's an unimproved street, then it can make them approve, if you don't think they need that access, or that they don't, there's no requirement, that that be developed, based on the configuration, then you don't have to make them do that street. People are on paper streets all the time to back up to their property, or on the side of the property, they just don't need it, the township sees no reason to punch you out of the street through there, but if you think it's necessary to fill in that piece of puzzle, or if it will help that neighborhood, or if it helps this development, you can make them approve the street.
There's nothing else behind it, let's, let's cite the ordinance that says that there's a pro-rata share, regardless of what the other street, it's in the ordinance, so.
And the other, the other ordinance that everybody's referring to, of how you get, how people come in and they say, that you get, that we put in the curve in the sidewalk, is based on, on Ordinance Twenty-Dash-One Point Sixteen, Required Street Improvements. And that talks about township engineer requiring, whether it's renovation, demolition, new construction, existing construct, existing structure just expanded by over a thousand feet, then the township engineer can go out and see what municipal improvements are required on that property, and he can require curbs, sidewalks, and street widening. And it says, an exception from the requirements of this section may be granted by the township engineer. Said exemptions, exemptions shall be based upon but not limited to review of the current conditions of the existing street improvements to which the property is bought. So, this is the ordinance that was referenced a, three years ago, I believe, I, somebody said it was by Mr. Klein, that everybody's been going by, that you have to improve your street. And it, and it went from what was technically an ordinance for the house that you had, or when you build on the street that doesn't have curb and sidewalk, how do you get curb and sidewalk? Which is a very good thing for everybody to have a curb and sidewalk. This doesn't say you get, you get a whole street just because you have a button of paper street. That goes back to the ordinance that's in your humanified development ordinance that says pro-rata share.
Now, so I, I personally, I just speak to myself, okay with pro-rata share, it has a lot of sense, and your streets really don't go anywhere.
Pro-rata share, but, but it may not.
But, regardless of how the ordinance determines how to calculate pro-rata share, that's what the ordinance says, so pro-rata share, zero, which I don't know, zero, but if that's what the ordinance, that's how the ordinance determines how to calculate, but right now, the streets, the streets don't go anywhere, so there's no purpose of the school to spend all the money and approve all the streets, I get that. But, but going back to Ellie's question, then, I mean, has it become a design waiver, which I guess we have to figure out, because I don't know how it comes to a design waiver if there's no, if there's no basis for the improvement of the, and that sort of stress is part of life.
We, we're agreeing to, to abide by the ordinance, that the township, the planning board, everybody put in that U D O. We'll comply with this, so we're not asking for a waiver, just because Dave says we need one, we're not asking for one.
Hey, Glenn, you're teaching us a lot tonight, you're not asking for variance, you're not asking for waivers, you're not teaching, you're not asking for anything, no, I'm being very, very passionate, I appreciate that. Yeah, so first, but, yeah, I mean, I'm personally okay with the pro-rata share, it makes, it makes a lot of sense for a development to contribute to pro-rata share, but at some point, somebody's gonna improve the road if they need it, and they'll get the money from previous developers, I mean, that's, that's what will happen.
Well, they'll go retroactive, John. So, let's say this becomes a big new development, will the school have to retroactive or not, prospectively have to chip in after the fact?
The school's gonna chip in.
Well, the, the way, if, if there's an improvement that adjoins your property, and I don't know if whoever does this or not, but under the law, they could do an assessment for a road improvement in front of your property, and that's not unusual, and that's perfectly within the law.
The township does it?
Yeah, whether they do it or not, I don't know, that's, that's an assessment to your property, you could do sidewalks, curbs, roads, improvements that are along your frontage. Now, whether the town actually does that or not, I don't know.
I mean, that's kind of what the ordinance says, they're gonna provide pro-rata share for all the unimproved streets that they front on right now.
Our goal is to finish the grid, is that all roads should be connected?
Which is, which is probably more about good, I mean, if the ordinance doesn't say anything, but the, the ordinance says that it's supposed to post a pro-rata share, and which is fine, so eventually, when somebody, when somebody needs the street to be approved, whenever a developer comes behind there, they'll get the money that the school posted or the other developer posted, so that's what the ordinance says.
This, this makes a good discussion, but I don't think this board has to rule on what the pro-rata share is. No, no, the, the end of the ordinance says, as a matter of fact, the improving authority may rely on estimates of the township engineer and planner to determine the pro-rata share.
No vote authority?
Well, the, the improving authority, so the board, or the township will rely on the township, the township engineer is the final call. If we don't give him, if he doesn't like our estimate, he can make it, he can give his own estimate, he has the final say on what the number is, from the ordinance.
So, you mentioned stuff with two thousand and seven, not the two thousand and seventeen.
It's not fair, Dave, I grew up on all three streets that go nowhere.
Right, go nowhere, so then potentially a developer behind can...
Well, it goes nowhere unless, you know.
I've heard from the president, what he's been doing all the years. Well, there shouldn't have been a design waiver, I just don't know where the design waiver comes from.
I mean, I guess the point is, if we grant the design waiver, then nothing happens. What I understand is that they're offering to pay the pro-rata share of the road improvements so that they don't have to request a design waiver, that's how I understand this.
But isn't that his point, that the pro-rata share, I think, is zero?
No, no, regardless, no, no, regardless of what the pro-rata share is gonna be, that's gonna be determined by calculation of the ordinance, I mean, if it's zero, it's zero.
That should be determined by the township engineer.
Yeah, I, again, obviously, I'm zero, it is what...
Yeah, regardless of what the fee is, I understand the board is asking, where does it say that they have to do this sort of design waiver?
Where does the comment come from, David? They should just be aware of these things, I mean, I'm, I'm...
What I would suggest, I, I think the consensus is this applicant is not required to build that roadway now, I think the board satisfied the road is not necessary at this time, it's just a question of whether they have to pay the pro-rata share for the roadway for me, is that where the board is right now?
It seems like they definitely have to pay a pro-rata share.
I'm sorry?
They definitely have to pay some pro-rata share.
So, what I'm saying is, if they say that doesn't apply, we can hold off on that issue...
Will the school have to retroactive or not? Prospectively have to chip in after the fact?
The school's got to chip in.
Well, the way, if there's an improvement that adjoins your property, and I don't know if whoever does this or not, but under the law, they could do an assessment for a road improvement in front of your property. That's not unusual. And that's perfectly within the law.
The township does it?
And whether they do it or not, I don't know. That's an assessment to your property. You can do sidewalks, curbs, roads, improvements that are along your frontage. Now, whether the town actually does that or not, I don't know.
I mean, that's kind of what the ordinance says. They're providing pro-rata share for all the unimproved streets that they front on right now.
Our goal is to finish the grid and say, all roads should connect.
Which is probably small, but good. I mean, the ordinance doesn't say anything, but the ordinance says that it's supposed to post a pro-rata share. And which is fine. So eventually, when somebody, when somebody needs the street to be approved, whenever a developer comes behind them, they'll get the money that the school posted or the other developer posted. So that's what the ordinance says.
This makes a good discussion, but I don't think this board has to rule on what the pro-rata share is.
No, no. The end of the ordinance says, as a matter of fact, the improving authority may rely on estimates of the township engineer and planner to determine the pro-rata share.
No pro authority?
Well, the improvement authority. So the board, or the township, will rely on the township. The township engineer is the final call. If we don't give him, if he doesn't like our estimate, he can make it, he can give his own estimate. He has the final say on what the number is. Perfectly organized.
Mr. Schmuck, you mentioned stuff with two thousand and seven, but it's not a two thousand and seventeen.
It's not fair, Dave. I grew up on all three streets that go nowhere.
Right, go nowhere. So potentially a developer behind can.
Well, it goes nowhere unless, you know.
I've heard from people doing all the years.
Well, it shouldn't have been designed waiver. I just don't know where the design waiver comes from.
I mean, I guess the point is, if we grant the design waiver, then nothing happens. What I understand is that they're offering to pay the pro-rata share of the road improvements so that they don't have to request a design waiver. That's how I understand this.
But isn't that his point? The pro-rata share, I think, is zero.
No, no. Regardless, no, no. Regardless of what the pro-rata share is going to be, that's going to be determined by calculation of the ordinance, I mean, if it's zero, it's zero.
That should be determined by the township engineer.
Yeah, again, obviously, I'm zero.
Yeah, regardless of what the fee is, I understand the board is asking, where does it say that they have to do this with a design waiver?
Where does the comment come from, David? They should just be aware of these things, I mean, of what we're.
What I would suggest, I think the consensus is this applicant is not required to build that roadway now. I think the board's satisfied the road is not necessary at this time. It's just a question of whether they have to pay the pro-rata share for the roadway improvement. Is that where the board is right now?
It seems like they definitely have to pay a pro-rata share.
I'm sorry?
They definitely have the basis for a pro-rata share.
So what I'm saying is, if they say that doesn't apply, we can hold off on that issue. I'll consult with Mr. Sheekar. We'll discuss it with the township engineer. And we'll see what they say. And then we'll put that into the resolution. Because they don't have to build the road either way, and I don't think we have to settle this issue right now, what the pro-rata share should be, or whether they have to pay a pro-rata.
No, I'm not going to settle that. That would become.
Yeah, I think that's a resolution and compliance issue.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Is there another question? Mr. Lyons, move back to the application. Is it a management application?
Yes.
Wanted to?
Yes.
Is there anything to record that you can add?
Uh, there's anything else?
Does anything have to be addressed?
There was one comment about lighting that was very bright, but we didn't want to be very light.
The school is not open, it's not open to probably be assured there or simple anything.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we made some calls to get an additional board member. We have an additional board member. My understanding is he must leave at eight thirty. So I've been requested to start the Mr. Penzer's application now. Let's hold this other one in advance for a couple of minutes.
I will take them all in ten minutes.
Unless we're ready for a vote.
Hold on, Mr. Schmuck. You don't get a say. Sit down.
Let me see, there's so much in the public that wants to.
Okay, well, I'm just bringing that to your attention, because I know there was a concern to get Mr. Ratz here at eight thirty.
I object.
You're objecting?
Oh, wait, it doesn't take long.
So we can put that on hold for a few minutes?
Put it on hold for a few minutes? Okay.
Okay, so make.
Okay, so nothing about yet on this application. We're going back to, which one is it?
SP eighteen, SP eighteen thirty eighty by NJHAN. It's a major site plan for phase six of Lakewood Common for sixty-five affordable units and recreation building. Let the record reflect that Mr. Ratz has arrived and Mr. Rendell is stepping down for this application.
So the record, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Penzer, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Penzer, hold on. Please keep it down.
Please be quiet in the audience. And Mr. Penzer, just one second, let them, they've got their report. Please.
Yes, this is a planned affordable residential development. It is phase six, the last phase of the New Jersey Hand project. And there are no grievances requested on this application. The total units on this have actually decreased from what was originally contemplated.
From four thirty-nine to three thirty-three eighty.
Three eighty, correct. And accordingly, the number of parking spaces, not as many are required as would have been between the off-street parking and the on-street parking.
Yeah, there would be a total nine hundred and sixty-eight spots.
And I guess if we could get testimony on explanation of how the unit mix has changed over the phases, so that, and how you arrive at the final number of proposed units.
Firstly, for five seconds, Mr. Ratz, thank you for coming last time. Thank you for this time. As you know, Jersey Hands is the arm of affordable housing in the Township Committee. Township Committee, in its wisdom, put us on a journey in July, thirteen years ago, exactly, in two thousand and six, when you approved general plan for one hundred percent affordable project of four hundred and thirty-nine units. And at that time, the last phase, which was this phase, was contemplated to be a six-story high-rise. In addition to that, we saw that we were going to need more areas for parks, so we put some private parks, and we put every top lot in addition to that. And we reduced the amount of units over. What we've done is, this is now, in our journey of thirteen years, you saw from the beginning, and we've come to you six different times, this is the final finale. What we've done is, we've duplicated every single phase the same way what it was. We have the only one hundred percent in Lakewood, moderate low income housing project. And some of them, Schmuck told me, some of the numbers that we sold some of the units for was about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which nobody could beat with, everyone would be comparable to about four, five hundred. So we've fulfilled our mission as far as economics concerned. Mayor Coles will help us tremendously, and you'll know that there's a street called Coles Way. This is, he calls it his crown jewel in his pack of jewelry. We've met every expectation. We've won every award for affordable housing, both for efficient appliances and the way we built. People who come, and we have many people who come to see our project, cannot believe that it's an affordable housing project. Granted, there's no basements, it's all single floors. To do so, but we have three and four bedrooms, some eight, nine feet. Even our bathrooms have ceramic tile inlay for soap. We've done, there's all the profits put in to give people a very high quality of life. So you should be proud, and we're very proud, that we're able to come to this mission. And the reason why I told you there's so little to say, because you can see it. It's not like you have to wait and see what a developer is going to do. You see it now, but for these sixty-five units, that we're here today for preliminary and final site plan. And the recreation building, all of it is built. You can see there's more playgrounds than you've required. You can see that we have over a hundred and twelve more parking spaces than required, and it works. There's not going to be objectory here. We have so many people that we feel, when we do a call for sixty or seventy units, we get, in the lottery, twelve, fifteen hundred people come to try to beg and try to get in, but it's a lottery system. So we've been successful, and we've done a beautiful job. And having said all those wonderful things, to save you time, there's nothing that you don't see in the report. And Terry was very gracious today. This was probably the shortest report. Remember, you're looking at sixty-five units and a recreation building, and it's only six pages of engineering. And the only thing that was talked about was, we had him here last time, was something about pares and landscaping. But other than that, our landscaping engineer was here this week, is not here, but is very minor. Here tonight is the engineer of the project, if you have any questions with him. And we have Scott here, the traffic person. And Scott will tell you, if you look at his report, which you've gotten, that in there that we've improved the access, and we're making things better by this last stage. Other than that, it's a win-win situation for all of us. And as I said last week, the only V word that you'll see in thirteen years is the name of the engineering firm, Remington Verdic. The V word varies. Doesn't, I know.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not the best in the V business. But this one is very hard for me to say, in forty-five years period for you, that any project of this scope, I did Westgate, we did pares, there's no pares whatsoever. So it's a kinshen shilai for everybody's case. And based on that, if you have anybody's questions of our engineer or traffic engineer, they're here to answer them. But other than that, this is a pares-free application. There is minor, minor things over here that was talked about. Other than that, we're completely compliant. That's our case.
Would you rate your end of work from this one, if you were to report it to the public in the state name and your profession?
For our patrol, professional engineer, New Jersey license.
Have you appeared before this board before?
I've appeared before this board or all the other previous cases.
And you've been recognized as an expert in field of engineering and planning, or?
Engineer.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you're not recognized? Okay, please, Mr. Penzer, you're with us.
I'll select the project in two minutes. After that, the buzzer will play up.
Understood. So as we discussed, virtually preliminary approvals of four hundred and thirty-nine units, we are currently at three hundred and eighty units. This is the last phase of project. It's an infill project. It's located here, which is exhibit A one, which is sheet CP four, which is the phase six overall site plan which you had in your package. It's down in the southeast corner of the project. Everything else in the development has been approved, including the roads and the stormwater management basins. This phase uses sixty-five units that we're putting in. Twenty-seven of those are the townhomes, thirty-eight are for condos slash apartment buildings. Based on the ordinance, eight hundred and fifty-six parking spaces are required, and we're providing nine hundred and sixty-eight. Just so you know, eight hundred and fifty-six are required. Eight hundred and seventy-nine of the nine hundred and sixty-eight are provided as off-street parks. So our off-street parking alone exceeds the requirement. And also, based on the previous design with multi-unit, this development actually reduces the overall coverage by zero point three.
More of a question? Is there anything in the report you can agree to?
No.
Any questions?
Mr. Grant, the traffic in the area?
Okay, we have a traffic in the next one, okay. Scott?
Okay.
Some of the boards that feel like those conventions.
Hi, this is Scott Kennel of the Donan Ray Associates.
Yes.
Correct. And you've recognized Mr. Kennel.
Yes. Scott, you submitted a report to this board when you did a traffic account. You fellas were agreed with it. What will be doing, what will be impacted, how will we satisfy even the county on the law grounds, what we've done?
Yes, I mean, we've done extensive traffic accounts. We've been involved in this project from its inception. And I know it's always been the focus of Spruce and Washington, being the critical intersection, it's usually a forty-five minute period in the morning, unless we're reading afternoon. But with this development in phase six, it provides two other points of access. It completes the roadway network to get access down to Oak Street, as well as then to Bellinger and East-West roadway provides access to Albert, eventually Sid, which will help north-south traffic. So it also provides access out to New Hampshire. So based on our analysis and our assessment, traffic conditions at Spruce and Washington are not expected to get any worse because there's additional access to this site to serve the desire lines to the north and east, which previously had, of course, everybody used Washington with Pine Street, everybody else with Pine Street and Washington intersection is like today. So in my opinion, this is, with the enhanced access system, conditions won't be any worse, and they've slightly improved from what exists today.
What's the level of service?
Level service at Spruce and Washington is the level service E in the morning. And as the report concludes, it will continue to be level service E. And a lot of that has to do necessarily, so much with the developed traffic, but with the traffic patterns that exist from Vine to Washington and the heavy north-south movement. Again, this development now, with the completion of phase six, provides an alternate means of access for residents to lessen the impact at Spruce and Washington.
What about Oak Street? I mean, Oak Street is pretty backed up in the morning as well. How does that access to Oak help so much?
Well, it just provides other means of access to South. Obviously, having Bellinger before you get to Oak Street is another east-west roadway competing, it created that one. As part of this development, also, the county requested, and this is prior, a prior approval, which when we considered the four hundred and thirty-nine units, is the restructuring of Oak Street at New Hampshire to provide two approach lines. Those plans have been submitted and approved by the county. So that's already a condition that's been satisfied by the applicant for the, as requested by the county previously.
What about changing the timing of the lights there? Is that part of that?
We have provided timing directives for them, for suggested timing directives, not only Oak in New Hampshire, but also Pine in New Hampshire. And they have been provided to the county for them to implement when appropriate.
And by Washington, is there any plans for four ways, a three-way stop rather?
Washington and.
At Spruce?
It's not my understanding. My understanding is that it will remain as it is. I'm not aware of anybody on municipal, again, that's a municipal intersection, so that would be an improvement that would be done by the municipality.
And by Pine and that outlet there, by?
Pine and Washington.
The next, is Washington goes through, is that the street?
Washington goes up to Pine Street.
So, yeah, the Washington and Pine, how about there that gets backed up a lot?
Again, I'm aware of some other improvements, again, township sponsored improvements where Washington will be improved to provide a two-lane approach. There's been some striping done recently. But I think the, my understanding is the other improvement that should be provided is the construction of Vine Street from Pine to Cedar Bridge, which again, has helped better distribute traffic. So those are all things that, as I understand, are in the works by the municipality. But again, by completing phase six and these other roadway improvements, it's my opinion that we're not going to make the conditions worse than what exists in the city.
These improvements that help. So all these road improvements would be helpful, the question's the timetable?
And that's something that's on, the township is, my understanding is pursuing. I know the Vine Street construction is subject to DEP requirements, and they're in the midst of that. I mean, I know there's been active, very many meetings for the township and the county as far as the Vine, the Vine Street and Cedar Bridge out of intersection improvements. It's in the design process. And from what I'm saying, really, the main, the heavy lift is DEP.
And what's the timetable for this phase six to be completed? If it's approved now?
Well, it's not construction January twenty-fourth.
To be completed?
A year later.
So in other words, if the roads are not upgraded within a year, would it be a problem at this point, in your opinion? I mean, without the restry.
All the roadway access, the access is recently they opened, so the access improvements fully in place are in place today.
So what you're saying about restrying or whatever else?
Are those, I can't answer where the township timeline.
So if it's the way it is right now with just those open accesses, are you comfortable with the extra sixty-five houses with the traffic in that area?
Yes, I am, because again, we have the ability to use the other roadway network to lessen the impacts at those locations.
You can edit the statements now?
Yes.
I've just told the residents that in the past three years, the people actually, actually building and going over the actual.
But the road will be open so that people are currently in there, can access it as they decide, even during construction time?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Question? Question, it's been a while since I've been out there. Is Cole completed to Funtson at this point?
It's constructed, it hasn't been opened yet, but they have other access points to get to Funtson, over by Tower, to work their way south. For Cole, as a person, engineer, I understand it's constructed, it's just been installed at this point?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any more members? Send well to the public. Interrogable public would like to be heard, just one more.
Well, should I just, one on two, on First Boulevard, Lake of New Jersey, eight seven eleven.
First quarter of the trip, all true to the.
I affirm, I'm glad we have the lead from the facts in this case, because no one's been better. I just want to make a point for the record. I know, I spoke to Andy Ham over here. I just want to make a point for the record. Lakewood's that standard of roads for new developments is thirty-two feet. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, all in agreement? Okay. The master plan calls for all of that. We talked about the master plan here, these houses and all that kind of stuff. One of the points on the master plan was that new developments, the bus places to pull over, and they also need wider roads. This development, I understand from way, way back when they got the phase in approval, they put in the roads before already then. The road is only thirty feet wide, and that's enough, I'm going to give it forward as well. I'm just. I'm just making this point for the record. Lakewood standard is now thirty-two feet. It's a different time zone than it used to be way back then. Additionally, there's, there was a petition two years ago. I told this, there was a petition two years ago. He told me, he actually wrote the petition, the people who live inside it, that the committee at Old Point, and then told Mr. Schmuck, he was on this fine board. He eliminated some parking from Phase Four. In either case, the petition to the committee was to bring back the parking. And the committee said no, based on the emergency services in town, who went out there and checked it out and said, I have a letter that they wrote then saying that the road is already too narrow as it is. We don't want parking on both sides. So the people who live there signed the petition, that means they needed the parking. And to hear from the emergency services that road is not wide enough to make more parking. I'm asking for the board to ask to make the road one foot moving over on each side, make a thirty-two foot wide road. Again, I know the road is already in, the curb is already in, but the house is ours. And like I said, Lakewood lift is in a different time zone now. And I'll just ask a question about the bus shelter. If there's no, if there can't be any place for a bus to pull over, could they provide some shaded shelters like they did in Chateau Woods and a couple other places? Those are comments?
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to be heard, just go forward. I'm going to say, if we were to widen the street to thirty-two instead of thirty, how would that affect your plans?
Right now, the curves are already...
And the roadway?
The road is all built.
It's all completed, we completed years ago.
The road's already in place?
Yeah, everything's there.
So you're requesting it now after it's already done, you're saying?
Yeah, it's not really, economically the story is.
But it was approved in the first phase because that was standard at that time?
That is correct.
And how do you feel about the safety standards that you brought up?
First of all, it's not two sides, it's only one side. Secondly, we would have no problem. The county committee said you could park there. We were very happy with having it open. There was a board member here who decided that he wanted to keep it closed. He did it. So it's not in our control overly. We're so happy about it, the name of this street is called Cole's Way after the mayor. So I can't speak to the mayor, who loves the street development, as to why he turned it down. But in one moment, he's taken it up for them. We don't have a problem with it being open down there, it's to take it out of our area. The petition went to the county committee, and the county committee is their wisdom that said no. We don't have a problem with always more. But remember, it was very important, we all care about safety. Please don't forget that we have a hundred and twelve off-street parking spaces, more than we need. Because remember, we're talking about affordable housing. We don't have people having a lot of cars. Whatever cars they have, we still have more than we need. That's not a problem here. The only thing that we talked about is a shortage of parking. And here, it's clear that we have a hundred and twelve spaces, more than that.
And in this whole section, there's no basements?
There's no basements.
Right. Okay. Anybody else who would like to be heard?
My name's Elder Renner, I live at one forty Cole's Way. Yes, I live at this development, and I took a token, as I did at other applications, where they came in favor of this application. Very loved it, very loved it, and I've gone above and beyond to help everybody. It is development, and it is a beautiful place to live in.
And you feel the roads are safe with thirty feet?
I think that the roads are safe.
Just, I just want to note to the board, Mr. Renner certainly has, as a neighbor who lives near this application, has an interest in it. Certainly has constitutional rights to come up and give his opinion on it, even though he stepped down from the board. So that's recognized by the case law, and it's completely appropriate. And I just wanted to put that on the record.
Anybody else who would like to be heard? Send well to the public, or ask for motion and certification?
I'll make a motion to move the application.
Okay, second. Okay, Mr. Flanshaw, more? Mr. Stevens, roll call?
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw? Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ritzel?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm being of Jersey, I have to thank the board. Mr. Ritzel, thank you for extending yourself. I made it before eight thirty.
Okay. Thank you. That's lovely. Okay, we're going back now.
Are you taking any one, are you going back on?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on just a minute, sorry.
Okay, we're going back now. Can you please leave quietly, and we're going back to number five, right?
I guess that's it.
Alan, you went to number five, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think the opposed attorney here is...
Daniel Robson, I'm attorney with Southgate Wagon and Wolf. Here on behalf of David Herzl, who is a property owner in the area. He is objected to the design waiver, the variance, whatever we want to call it. As you know, he's got that length already, but I would just like to bring up a few points.
What, what's your opinion? Is it a...
My opinion is that regardless of whether it's a design waiver or variance, and I'm not going to argue against the ordinances that were brought up before the board. As a practical matter, I think the board agrees that they will be required to pay a pro-rata share for the construction of these roads. As a practical matter, it makes more sense to have them front the cost now than to have future developers chip in a pro-rata cost. To require future developers to, to require them to pay their pro-rata share in the future, I should say, when the road's developed in twenty, thirty years, doesn't seem very practical to me. And another factor I think the board should consider is that it's in the public interest to have the developer install the road now. And the reason being is, this is a school, there's going to be a dorm on the school, and it's surrounded by unimproved roads. As a safety matter, I think having improved roads would be a benefit to the students at the school. And that is definitely in the public interest, have these roads developed at this point in time. Also, the school is fronting the road. My client previously had his application denied to improve. Now, this wasn't a major issue, but he was going to be required to develop the roads around his property. And as another practical matter, I think the board should try to stay consistent with its rulings for all of the property owners in the area.
Okay, thank you. So is your opinion that it's a waiver or a variance?
I have not had a chance to actually review the ordinance that I obtained about an hour before this hearing. But I'm here as an advocate for my client, just on the fact that I think the roads should be improved. You shouldn't have these develop, one developer have to improve a road where others do not. And I don't think that's the...
That's why the pro-rata share ordinance is in place.
And I don't disagree with that, but to say, oh, we'll have you chip in later, at a later date after your product's already been complete, doesn't make a lot of sense.
No, 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 that's chip in now before they...
I, I, it's my opinion that they should post a pro-rata share now. You know, not just... On the basis of what they project the road will cost, and that's your opinion? Well, whatever the calculation is in the ordinance, I know the calculation in the ordinance, but, and the ordinance, I'm just, I'm just reading the, I know engineers love to read ordinancees, but it's... You know, it's like the, you know, but, but I know, I know that there's a calculation in the ordinance in terms of how to calculate the pro-rata share. And I, I believe that if it is approved, it should be a condition of the resolution that they post the pro-rata share probably as a condition before they get building permit or something like that. Again, this is my opinion. And who would be making this calculation? Would it be the developer? The township engineer? I think according to the ordinance, it says the township engineer. And of course, if the, you know, if for some reason the applicant's engineer disagreed, they would probably give a go back for the township engineer. But hopefully, yes, the township engineer that makes that determination. Do I have anything further?
I have a question.
Thank you.
Where, where is your client's property located?
It's northeast of the property at issue. He applied for his own application about a couple of months ago, two months ago.
So would Caldwell?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I believe, I believe it does. Or he wrote the application, which was denied.
Okay, well, regardless, I guess, the reason I'm asking the question, the three unimproved right-of-ways are in different conditions. Caldwell is clear, there is a gravel roadway. The other two right-of-ways are wooded, they haven't been touched. So they're not all the same situation, and that's, that's valid.
I agree, and even though there might not be a lot of development off of Caldwell, there hasn't testimony that there are houses back there. Maybe not a lot, but there are some. There would be some ingress, egress on that road.
Want to know which, which property is referring to?
Yeah, just checking one thing.
I looked on the names, it's the same.
This, this is the last one on the list, which is...
Oh, David Herzl, nine ninety-nine.
Lot twenty-three. I know it's a small map, but that's, that's his larger lot over here. Show me to the northwest.
Show me on the, on the bottom of the...
Oh, like right there.
So there, it's all nine hundred and...
And I believe that lot goes all the way up to the bottom. So there's access from into that lot, it's fine.
Yeah, Vermont, yes.
Vermont, I'm sorry. Did I say it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to be heard, send the petition, just go forward. Send well to the public?
I think everybody's tired of me.
I want to ask for motion and certification? Okay, let's go, what's with the buzzing? Are you okay with it? The way it is?
Thank you, yeah, well, I'm not, firstly, I'd rather the parking than no parking. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the way it is now. Because I, I'd rather the parking, that's what it is. Okay, did we talk about anything else?
Just appropriate.
Appropriate the share, great, okay, just appropriate, okay. So I, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
They use many outside.
Yeah, there's no, I see a basin, there's a basin on it. There's no basin, right? Okay, so there's no, there's nothing, there's nothing there. I looked at the land in between in the thirty-second break, and I didn't see a basin, so...
There's no shul, so there's no shul, there's no central hall.
So that solves that issue. So I'll make a motion to approve the application that's presented. I think the pro-rata share, which should be a condition of the resolution, which should be posted before building permits issued, this rates in place, there's no question about it.
Justin, can I ask a question?
You do have one, that's Caldwell. It's kind of approved, and then the rest of them are just... Hey, are you talking about all three or just Caldwell?
Well, it's, yeah, it's not the all-three, it's half-frontal, it's all-three.
I think the order on the set was...
It's gotta be all-three, yeah.
The pro-rata...
Whatever streets you have front of you, so that's all-three.
And just, this is board's aware. Ask for a council for future improvements. When proposed, all track improvements will be undertaken at some future date. They'll put it in the new square and add it to the house.
Yes, is that where the cash, whoever needs the streets to be improved or whatever they're doing behind there, they'll get that one?
Right.
Okay. And I think also, not dependent on this application, but I think Reddington, when they do their review letters, the letter, unless we're missing something, should reflect the pro-rata share, the narrative about the pro-rata share. Instead of reflecting a waiver, it's needed?
We, we looked at it at the time that they weren't doing it, so that's why it was listed as a design waiver. The applicant came to the meeting offering to do the pro-rata share.
No, they're, they're wanting to acquire the pro-rata share. So in the future, Reddington's letter should...
Yes, but you also had the opportunity to just give him a design waiver and...
We don't like, I would not like that. The pro-rata share should always be part of...
Okay.
We lost our application.
I think we're losing a lot of money, don't we?
Yes, absolutely. The pro-rata share should always be part of it.
Okay. We will change that. Okay, do we have a second on the motion? Can Mr. White seconds, roll call?
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw? Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have one left.
Number eight.
SP twenty-three four seven.
Please leave quietly.
For little people, childcare, this is a major site for a daycare located on South Culver Street.
Say everyone go through the report, please.
Okay, this is for a daycare facility in the Park Forty Zone. The building would be on Culver Street, front of Culver Street. Parking would be a one-way in, one-way out deal. Thirty-four Oak Street space are proposed with two ADA spots. Standard parking size is outlined by eighteen feet.
You have submission waivers, huh?
Yes, just give me some background. Submission waivers, topography, and information for the two hundred feet. We can support the website feature submission waivers since there is enough topography available for the design. There's a submission waiver requested from providing an environmental impact statement. Now, this property previously had approval for duplexes, which were not built. And at that time, they got a fill permit for those duplexes. And as long as a modification to that fill permit is made a condition of approval, you can write the submission waivers.
Do we have more? Second, second, all in favor, I agree. Okay, onto Zonin.
Okay. Zoning, it, Lieutenant Shaw, Fair Centers are permitted in all Zone Districts. This is our forty Zone District. They're requesting a side door setback variance of seven feet, whereas fifteen is required. That's the only variance that's, that's requested. For design waivers, they need buffer relief from the, from the... I guess that's the southwest side of the property, which is developed next, next to it. And they also need relief from the driveway widths. They have fifteen-foot-wide one-way driveways in and out, where minimum of twenty are required. Looking, looking at the circulation, circulation's tight, and they do have a surplus of parking. I would recommend that they widen the driveways to twenty feet, so they get better circulation, and they'll still be able to meet the parking requirements. And the other thing is, if you look at the, like I said, they said a go permit from a previous job with duplexes, the duplexes took up the whole property. I'm not sure why they can't move the building over, comply with the side door setback. So I, we need testimony on those issues.
Thank you.
Is there a one line back there?
The, the whole, yeah, most of the track is wetlands. And like I mentioned before, it had a previous approval. They got approval to fill all of the wetlands, because they're, I guess because they're isolated is the reason. They give testimony on that, so...
At this point, they weren't the wetlands, right?
Well, they're still, the property has a previous approval, but they haven't been touched. So the wetlands exist to that... So the wetlands exist today, there's existing house on the southwest corner of the property that's there today. Now it happens to be removed with this site plan. So really, since the previous approval, nothing's happened to the site.
Thank you so much, Mary Weinstein, on the applicant, Little People Childcare. This application is for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a two-story daycare facility with a finished basement on the subject lot along with a parking lot consisting of thirty-five parking spaces. As they've indicated, the only variance requested is the side yard setback of seven feet where fifteen feet is required. We will certainly provide testimony for the justification of the granting of this variance, which does in fact have to do with the wetlands and the DEP permitting. As with previous applications for daycare centers, the applicant will comply with all requirements for licensed daycare centers in accordance with the New Jersey Administrative Code. This is daycare center, no school buses will access the site, all drop-offs and pickups will be by parents. At this point, I'd ask to have Mr. Flannery's warrant.
I do, I'm Flannery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have three business mark, A1 is a copy of sheet one-one-six of the Lakewood tax map, showing where the subject property is. A2 is a copy of the site plan submitted, showing the proposed building play area, parking area. And A3 is a copy of the Google map showing where the site sits. I'm sure the board is familiar, it was taken a location on the Google map, which when the apartments there were being renovated, so it looks like it's open. That's all been recently renovated, as I'm sure the board is familiar with. So this property is in the R forty zone, but it's not an R forty zone that has forty thousand square foot lots. It's a zone that has apartments, multifamily, and the zoning board, as Dave indicated, granted approval for duplexes on this property. The proposed project, the daycare, daycare is a use that's needed. It is, this site screams for daycare, it's on a roadway that provides the access. We're providing more parking than required by the ordinance. We have shifted the building and the intensity of the development away from the environmental features. The setback that we're looking for the relief from is toward the apartments that are there, which have not provided a fifteen-foot setback either. So it's, the reason for a fifteen-foot setback being required by the ordinance is because this is in an R forty zone. It's really not an R forty, it's more than RM. The seven feet that we're proposing is consistent with an RM, it's consistent with the other setbacks in the area. And it preserves the environmentally sensitive part of the site while providing for the daycare.
But they've touched on, the zoning board approved, the DEP approved that you can fill the wetlands? Can you explain that?
Zoning board approved duplexes, and a fill permit was required.
What does that mean by fill?
A fill permit means there's a wetland area that.
Wetlands, wetland buffer.
A wetland area. In order to get a fill permit, the fill permit is for wetland, you also get buffer reductions when you fill the wetlands. And in order to get the fill permit, an environmental consultant submits, and the DEP says the quality of the wetlands here doesn't make sense. The owner has a right to use the property and have the appropriate use of the property. I'm sure it was achieved, one of the general permits that was approved, and it gives the criteria to grant that.
Why can't you shift the building over, what do you get the variance on? If you have a permit to fill.
The variance, I will touch on my testimony, why we think that's appropriate. And the reason I think it's appropriate is because this really isn't an R forty zone. And I testified at the zoning board when this was granted, and it was the same thing, this isn't an R forty zone.
Even if it's R fifteen or R ten, you also need more than seven feet.
Well, you also need more than seven feet, but when you look at it, it connects two apartments. It makes more sense to leave more open area for the kids to play. It makes more sense to have the buildings in that area. Yet the board said you'd prefer to have ten, certainly we could shift the building over three feet and give you ten. My professional opinion is that the seven feet that's proposed is consistent with what you would have in an R seven-five or RM. This is more consistent with an RM zone. All the uses that are there are multifamily. The uses that were approved on this site are multifamily.
The board tells you to shift it?
If the board says to shift it, whatever the board says to shift.
No, but then you're going into the wetland buffer, which is okay.
Oh, okay. My esteemed colleague has indicated that if we shift it over, we're going to have more than a quarter of an acre in the filled area. And if you, you're not allowed, so that's the answer. We cannot move it over because of the environmental constraints.
Your plan shows a power wetland, we don't see how that's any relevant.
Well, the 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 wetlands that are being filled, you have a limit of the impervious coverage in that area. So New lines has measured that impervious coverage, and we're just under a quarter acre of impervious. We're at point three-four-nine-nine-nine-nine. If we move it over, it violates the condition of that permit. So we would have to make the building smaller, which doesn't make sense. Again, if you look at the nature of the uses that we're adjoining, the nature of the uses in the area, a seven-foot side setback is what's appropriate.
What's the setback for the residential usage?
The, when you say the residential usage, you're talking about the duplexes that were approved?
No, no.
The apartments, yeah, those are apartments next door. And you can see the apartments are set back probably about seven feet as well. The apartments are very close to the property line. They were approved based on the same rationale that this really isn't an R forty area, it's more than RM. And an RM, a seven-foot side setback is appropriate. If you look at, you know, what's the impact or what issue it's going to cause for the neighbor, it causes no issue for the neighbor. The neighbors will probably love the fact that there's childcare here that they can walk to, and, you know, a place for the children when they go to work.
How many, how many kids are in each one of the classrooms?
And the, what's the total number you anticipate of the facility? And the facility has jumped to nine fifty, you can imagine.
So I imagine it's all kind of, excuse me, cold. It's all peak low, you know, nine fifteen to nine thirty, so how do we get in?
It's really not stacked, the.
Staggered by Sunday, forty-five.
Okay.
We've had daycare centers approved before.
What's that?
We've had daycare centers approved in front of this board, I think it was before you were sitting here, the board was Mr. Stern. And we actually had the traffic consultant who came in and went through the peak times. I think the peak times are from eight forty-five to nine fifteen, but there are definitely drop-offs that are after that, and pickups are definitely very, very staggered.
So, right, let's leave the pickups. How many parts, I can see it, any purpose also here?
Thirty-five.
There's thirty-four parking stations.
Thirty-four. So what's the maximum window of time? So let's grant your point, not every person gets nine fifteen, you're saying they can start at when? Eight-thirty, and when do they stop, kind of dropping off?
I mean, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock. Okay, fine, let's just do the math. How long does it take, you got to park, you got to get a little goober out, you got to put his coat on, you got to make sure he's got his passy. You walk him in, you say goodbye, goober, walk back, that takes time. So you got two fifty, you got a ninety-minute period, you got thirty-four stalls, that means you got to do like eight, what's the word, or turns of the parking lot in an hour and a half.
There are parents that have to be more than one child.
That is true.
Probably seven.
That is probably true. Babies have her little goobers. No, it's beautiful, we do need more childcare, I'm just. You know, clover, mommies backed up, all the little Sierras and the Odyssey's are backed up, people are screaming, there's home, Kate, they can't turn in because they didn't have parking.
I've been doing it, but only one at a time. But that's daycare down by my street from me, and it's the same thing, the park comes in, and it's two, three minutes before they're out. And it's the same fifteen every day, and you can turn those spaces over at least every five minutes, and it's, and it's not. So continuing what the. It's a permit, it's a permit used to.
Good question. How many?
I have, it actually would be like twenty-five.
So there, presumably not walking.
So you have ten spots available for the two hundred fifty parents coming?
I, they're not all there at the same time, and some of them will come after they've filled the yard, so. They scare, they scare staffers, it's the same as they did. You know, at eight o'clock, you can all be the whole staff.
I don't think so. Where's Mark Morris, no, I'm, you say it all.
Showing extent.
Let's, if we can have the applicant affirmed, I think the applicant can tell us how the process really works, would probably be, would be a better idea.
Please state your name for the applicant.
Ephraim Pearlstein.
Okay.
Spell your first and last name.
E F R A I M, Pearlstein, P E R L S T E I N.
Mr. Henry, just word from testimony, if you're further reporting the two thousand.
Yes. Hi, everybody. So we currently run a daycare, it's a new daycare, we're now by one forty, Clay Avenue. Our biggest interest is that it should be very convenient for the parents to drop off from the government, not sit in the Sienna hovering down Clover Avenue, and then go to the next daycare down the block.
Right.
So our best interest to have a pro rata share, which we, that's sort of our goal is, is to make it as convenient as possible, designing the property to the best way possible. First of all, we don't accept children that don't have more than one in the family. Most of the families, I would say probably ninety-five percent of the schools is more than two children, most of them have three children in the family. Second of all, all our twenty-five staff members have their kids in the school as well. Third of all, we have a certain place to make sure that everyone's in and out as quick as possible. Bringing them to the front door, having loading area, having their toys on beforehand, getting them in, getting them out, to be as quick as possible.
Where's the loading?
That's, yeah, where's the loading?
In the building, loading area is in the building.
Cars going to the building?
No, not in part, loading area.
No, no, children's loading area, they don't have, the parents, like you said before, don't have to come park, take a walk around the playground, then go inside.
Do you have a staff member coming up to take the truck?
Yes, yes, sorry, step. They walk up to the front of the lobby, there is a tremendous amount of lobby space, the grade level, and then above that, and then under that was. Where? In the building.
Inside.
Inside, inside the building is the, is the, is the loading area.
So I'm.
Child, child loading area, I'm sorry.
So the parents park?
Parents park.
They park, and then they go out, they go out, they get the child?
Yeah.
And they do all in.
Very short, very short time.
Under three minutes.
Much less than that, for sure. As well, the, like we said before, between eight-thirty and ten o'clock drop-off, pickup between two-thirty and four-fifteen. There's never a time you have more than, I would say, ten cars. There's no PTA happening, there's no social, there's no, there's no significance, nothing going on there. It's very little amount of in and out going on. There is enough parking for the staff members, but most staff members are single, they carpool together, they, you know, it's not, you know, they're way above what they, what was required to have in terms of what's the car for a staff member, but they, it's not that way.
Okay, thank you. Brian, how do you get a draw to these on this, how many parking units?
One per classroom and one per office.
It's not, it's not, it's a school.
Well, that's a school, it goes by the number of employees, if you read the ordinance, it goes by the number of employees, which is twenty-five. The DEP report on by the Lawrence Simmons stand of one per classroom and one per office, which is twenty-seven, we've still got thirty-four.
It doesn't make sense for a daycare center, the people are coming and going. I mean, that's the.
The ordinance doesn't have anything else, the ordinance, I don't know, I have the. The ordinance goes on to say, you know, for childcare, if it's in a building that's standalone, you exclude any of that area for parking applications. And you exclude any of that area for density in the building, but then it goes on, it became eighty-nine hundred F C. Notwithstanding the above statements, the developer of a childcare facility in an existing structure or standalone facility that requires site plan review and will be subject to the standards of the district in which it's located, parking requirements shall be based on evaluating the following factors, the maximum number of children for which the site is licensed, the number of employees present during maximum shift, and the operational plan for drop-off pickup of children. So it excludes. We had the applicant testify, the applicant who's an experienced daycare operator, who in his best interest, to have the daycare work, because nobody's going to go to it if it can't, and it doesn't work. Hardly any review, the plans that twenty-seven were required, we would have thought twenty-five, another five, and then thirty. We provided thirty-four, which is what the applicant said makes sense for the facility in this type. So we just pick, the parking was balanced with the building and the need, and this particular use in this particular area, I think they certainly built the site.
That's the maximum parking space you could look on this property with the.
Yes.
Dave, what section of your report deals with the parking?
Uh, just can we get a little review comments?
Uh, page four, review comment, number three.
Thank you.
Correct. Question, what's the status of that NJDP co-permit? How does that stand?
Follow the modification of it, the engineers offices indicating they should add that within thirty days, from the NJDP. To Boys Environmental Handle It, for the applicant.
So Dave, kind of walk us through your comments on number three, and what you guys did for calculations? How did you guys come up with your conclusions?
We looked at, we looked at the architectural plans, and we counted up the number of classrooms and the number of offices, figuring out, projecting that you would need twenty-seven employees. And that's how we came up with twenty-seven off-street parking spaces.
Who wrote the kids and the mommies and the Sierras?
It had nothing in the ordinance to go by.
What did you just read, Brian?
It had no numbers associated with it.
What, what is that from?
But that's from the.
You were reading about the criteria for childcare, we should take into fact all these criteria.
That's from the Lakewood ordinance, and it doesn't give any specific numbers with relation to the parking.
Can you read it again, please, the whole section?
Notwithstanding the above statements, the development of a childcare facility in an existing structure or standalone facility shall require a site plan review and will be subject to the standards of the district in which it's located. Parking requirements shall be based on evaluating the following factors, the maximum number of children for which the site is licensed, the number of employees present during maximum shift, and the operational plan for drop-off pickup of children during the day's collection. And previous daycare applications that we've done, that's what it is. The applicant presents his plan on how the children are going to be dropped off and picked up. It gives the number of employees, and you give the number of employees plus some additional parking space.
Was that plan submitted as part of your application? It sounds very reasonable, but was that presented?
Well, it's presented in testimony.
It's presenting it now, in other words.
But how are you expecting on the fly? I mean, I'm looking, we have a hundred eighty, we have an. I mean, I'm looking, we have a hundred eighty, we have an hour and a half, a ninety-minute period. I'd say Brian says twenty-five minutes, that's eighteen cycles. You've got ten people there.
I agree, I have nothing to go by. I, I understand your question.
I'm not saying no, but just saying. Does he look very smart?
See, see, that, that's...
We did, we did not review a plan, this said, this, that math works.
See, that, that's why I was asking about the filter permit, because I could see that the board would like something bigger.
But you said, you didn't just say it needs more...
The other cars have...
That's right.
No, we don't.
No, we don't. We don't look up. Our certainly, we certainly...
I'm trying, please, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And, and...
We can't...
I can only fight somebody either once.
Brian, how did you go with thirty-six, thirty-four? Uh, the, some of the comments from the original review from the tech meeting, uh, in order to make the, uh, the layout of the parking lot there.
I don't like to go none of the way.
Uh, well, we don't like to go that way either, but, uh, we feel that the thirty-four is more than enough. And, and I think Bruce, you're looking at one child per car. The applicant indicated there's not going to be one child per car. There's going to be, uh, two, two, two or four children.
Right, so was that part of a narrative, a due patient narrative, that our engineers could have reviewed and they could have done the math? You're probably right. But we, your ordinance says we got to do a review of the plan and the number of kids.
And, and there's a technical review in the application, and if there's any information that's required in the technical review, the applicant provides that information to the board.
Okay, so that should have been requested.
Well, I, I think that what's been done in the past on the daycare is, at, at the hearing, the applicant presents how the, uh, drop-off is, and that information is provided at the hearing. I mean, if you're looking at, and the applicant said he's going to do it in less than three minutes. So if you're, you're talking about a car that's probably go up, let's say, an average of three kids every three minutes, we can, we can drop off nine hundred kids in that.
I can't drop off my kids, like, I can't do this.
Your wife handles.
Too shady.
I, I have a suggestion.
Yes, please.
They said they, the, uh, filter permit has been taken, has been done by the boys and submitted to the state. We don't have a copy of that. I'm going to suggest that they submit that and we carry this to the seventeenth so that we can evaluate, evaluate if they're really in a box and they can't expand this anymore. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I mean, I think everybody is discussing, well, maybe we need more parking, maybe we should move the building. If, if they really are restricted by the DEP and you can't do that, then, then why discuss it?
Well, why can't we just agree that if we can give more, if we can get more parking, we certainly will. The applicant has the same interest as the board, and the applicant would be more than happy to maximize the parking. The applicant's, and here is indicating that it's not feasible. Obviously, we can go back and see if it is, and we'll certainly stipit, be willing to stipulate in the resolution that if it's possible, we'll get more parking, but right now, this is the maximum amount of parking. And we believe, based on the applicant's testimony, that this will work.
So my concern this once is not your client's testimony, is the fact that the three elements that Brian listed in our orders for childcare, one, two, three, I don't think there was any analysis at the staff level in the technical review of those three elements. I'm not saying it's not going to work. Sound like a great plan to me, but did we consider the number of kids? Did we consider the number of staff? Did we consider, sound like we considered the staff, but did we consider the number of kids? And how many you can drop off feasibly, and how many of the parents, you know, show us your policy that says you got to have two kids. Oh, so we just cut the number of cars to half. There's, there's got to be, there's got to be analysis, it's something that our team can review. I guess, I'm, I'll defer to the board, but...
Yeah, the only question is that, what he's testified, that Brian's testified, and I asked if any variance on parking. I think the ordinance is not written correctly, because I think a daycare center with two hundred fifty kids needs more parking than just ten parking spaces, we have twenty-five for staff. But that's what the ordinance says.
But the ordinance says we should do some kind of review, which implies if we do review and it's inadequate, then we can do something, right? Right?
The...
If we do review and we find out you've got ten thousand kids coming to this...
Your review was, yeah, you had the applicant testify, there'll be maximum two hundred fifty kids, and he's testified, they're coming with three kids in a car. If it's true or not, that's what he's testified. I don't know how the, you can't verify this.
And, and again, that, that information could have been provided in writing, and it could have been provided upfront. Like, we'd be in the same situation than right now.
I understand what you're, what you're saying, that your professionals would have, or could have evaluated differently than what we're giving you. Would have, had we given you, I, I, I agree with you. They didn't evaluate it the way the board feels that it should have been evaluated. As a matter of fact, Dave's opening comment was that there was excess parking, and that we should widen the aisles and we should give you less parking, if I recall correctly, so...
Well, the question I asked you originally, if you get through a filter permit, can you extend the parking lot on the right of the property?
Right, and, and I, I thought it was, but now based on information from the Boys Environmental, and, and I, I know the Boys Environmental, they're, they're the premier environmental company in this area. And the information that the Boys provided to New Lines is that this is the maximum permit covered.
I should say that's...
Yes, so, so that's not an option.
Okay, the only question, what's on the rear of the building, the open area?
Sounds like yard.
There's lots of play area.
Play area, play, they came to one play area.
Yeah. They'll be behind that, above that.
In fact, there's some trees being planted along, and it'll just be open area. Yes.
Dave, isn't the low that every single classroom has to have a teacher in their name? David for ratings.
No, but, but the avenue is going to have to comply in order to get license with all the requirements under New Jersey administrative code. So whatever those requirements are, they're going to be complied with.
One feature per class.
So there's one feature, you take care of twenty-five kids per classroom?
Uh, it's not.
I think the last daycare application...
There's twenty-one, you're saying that there's two hundred fifty kids in this, in the, in the school. You have twenty-one classrooms, that's, that's, right?
That's about twenty. That's about twenty.
You've got, so you have fifteen kids, one teacher's helping.
I think the last daycare application, application we had, we said we had got the architect to...
You did. You did, and the architect came, but he, he, he came, but he didn't shed that much light. It was like, at the end of the day, he said the same things that we're discussing now, which is why we didn't tell the applicant how to bring his architect. It's true, I remember that you, just, I remember distinctly that you made us come back.
Remembered.
Yes, that's... Why did you make the architect?
It's why I see on the county line, one, I don't know if you were there, turning the car.
I was, and Brian was the engineer.
I think somebody had a motion, or somebody asked that there should be staff members waiting outside to take the kids from the cars, that they could, they could move faster.
That's fine, I think that's, that's a fair request.
Yes, and, and that is the procedure that the applicant indicated that they're going to do, when they can bring them inside the building to a loading area, and I think there was some confusion there, that it's a car loading area, but, but they more actively pull the staging area, if, where there's other staff that, that can come.
And just to remind you, on the county line application, I don't think there was even as many parking spaces as there are here. It's a much busier, it's a much busier site, and there were neighbors that we were contending with, which we're not contending with here. I mean, between, this site is clearly more suitable for a daycare than that one was.
Okay. Did I, my best one?
What you mentioned, right?
No. We, we got, we got...
Sorry, pardon.
Yeah, I, I, as indicated in the report, the...
Let's move on to that.
Well, if the board's ready to approve it, I, yeah, but...
Just if there's any variances, without a record?
Well, there, there is the variance for the seventh, and so, I, I wanted to indicate that, uh, the municipal land use law, they, they went into a big thing on daycares, NJAC forty-four and fifty-five D sixty-six point five eight, um, and, and it indicates the legislation finds and declares that with over fifty percent of the working age women that would workforce, the need for quality care is high, and it goes on and on and says a lot of things. And that's why in the Lakewood ordinance, those are included. With respect to the justification for the setbacks variance, first of all, it's my testimony that it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood, but the master plan of two thousand and seventeen division statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, where you have a house that doesn't belong here and put in daycare, which is a inherently beneficial use. The municipal land use law, NJAC forty-four and fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the act, says encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general wellness. My testimony that that does that. These would be C two variances, certainly it's a very specific piece of property. Purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, it can be granted without any substantial detriment of public good. Uh, the, the variance will not carry the intent purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance if it complies with the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and it benefits substantially outweigh any detriment, which in my opinion, the ordinance...
Can I just go into the report? Every word in the report that you have in there?
Um, but they, they, they wanted testimony, there's no must-drop-off area, and, and we're confirming that. Uh, I don't think there was anything else. We will satisfy all the other times. We will satisfy all the other times. Anyone else want to talk about...
You want?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something.
Okay.
Brian, now, we want to first...
You were talking before.
Yeah. I want to first address the question, David. Dave. Dave, thank you, Dave. First of all, um, we, we, we were working off of the previous approval that we had from the DEP. That, that, that number that we have about the previous, we're not going on the property, which is what got us to the site plan that we had. Um, we spent a tremendous amount of time to get into as much parking and as much accessibility as possible we had on one way in, a circle lap, where we, where we, we were not happy with that. We wanted an in and out, that that car just come and they go out quicker, rather than just coming in and trying to turn around somehow to get out. Uh, we came out with this beautiful plan, we could go in and go out as well. Um, next regarding the question you had about the, the moving over the seven, seven foot setback, that's what we keep, the setback, we have to be able to, we have to shift over the building to get the correct turnaround to make it as quick as possible. I also wanted to, what I said before, that our best interest is doing is getting in and out as quick as possible, making such a motion that we should have some there, there to, to help quicken the drop...
They got an expedite.
Expedite, a great idea, something that, you know, we're, we're prepared to do, something that we understand to do. Like I said before, I currently run the daycare, it's not on some, some data at all. I, I understand to what it needed, and, uh, we're expanding what we currently have. And like we're saying before, there's tremendous need for the daycare, uh, yeah.
The board is looking for the safety of the children.
And, yeah. We also, it's very important, um, to be in for us this coming September. Especially not being able to be in for September would be a very big concern to us because of to be accommodating the growth of all you need to accommodate. Registration's out today, actually, I've performed not to have everybody for us the entire day. So not being able to be in by September would be, if not accommodate as many parents as we would like to be able to accommodate, and give them the surface of being licensed, licensed center, and to have a benefit for being in proper safe environment for them to actually, properly have.
Thank you.
Um, I want to make a comment, I just pulled up the ARKJ.com, um, saying get staff job ratios. Under eighteen months, it's one staff for every four children. Eighteen months, two and a half years, it's one staff for six children. Two and a half years, four years, it's one staff for every ten children. What are your ratios of kids per class? If you're saying that there's going to be, well, let's say twelve kids per class, uh, on eighteen-month-olds, that's, that's three staff members.
Like I said before, we, we, we only take in families that have three kids. That means it's not applies at the new one, we don't take them in. We mostly have, we only have our new one roof just to service our older children, it's enough. It's in preschools, not a, we don't have baby roofs, generally speaking. We have very, very minor amount of babies, and if it's under eighteen months, because of staff ratio, we're, it's very, it's very not affordable to have to run a daycare with such low ratios, like you see before. So we have most of our schools aged, most, most of the house is servicing the preschool-aged children where there's one to four ratio.
Four years, that's four years old.
Yeah.
So you're not servicing...
One to ten is three, and one to four is twelve, yeah. And one, three-year-olds are one to ten, four-year-olds are one to twelve.
Okay, and two-year-olds?
Right, two to three, it's mostly three-year-olds and four-year-olds, preschool. Then we have the younger ages to be able to be serviced for those back for the older children.
I would open the panel right now. What shows I am this, you got a guess, one, two, on first floor, Mark?
Do you swear from testimony before with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I affirm, uh, first of all, there is a great need. Um, just, I'm going to give my two cents, my two cents to the board, because you've been here a long night, you deserve to hear a laugh to say. During the master plan process, you guys spend hours and hours and months over Eco Bridge, and, uh, what other important stuff do they spend lots of time on? Uh, you spent a lot of time on lots of stuff, but you know if tomorrow I wanted to build a three-story built building with the lake towers in the basement, a daycare on the ground on the first floor, and a BMG herb on the third floor, Mr. Renner, can you tell me how many parking spaces would I need? Mr. Hittle, can you tell me how many parking spaces I need?
And she had a question for the engineer.
I think this is a rhetorical question.
Zero, zero, look up the ordinance, zero. Have you worked on the master plan and say, we need a, a thing about, about daycare? You may recall, I, I was here and I told you about shoes, right? And you said, the time you came with me, you were the last stand of the world. Zero, you didn't say anything about shoes, you didn't say anything about daycares. Understand? Now, one, one, uh, two questions I have, just want to put on the record, ask Brian, I just want to put on the record. Uh, I understand this will have to go to the county planning board for their approval. Um, could, would this board recommend to the county, I don't know how the process will have, or recommend, that with the writing, because I said there'll be a writing, only I see the sign saying write, writing, would they recommend like the school that we did by Chestnut in New Hampshire, the concrete thingy? You know, you know what I'm talking, what's it called?
The porch act?
What?
The porch act?
I'm not sure, but yeah, that thingy. And the other, that's one question I have. The other question is, just, I think I understand the other side of the road will have a no left turn sign, but just to, to discourage people from even turning on their left turn blinker and trying to get in, because I know there's something up slow, over the other side, and people are on the left turn blinker the whole day while cars are trying to cross it. Would, would this board be able to recommend that the counties look at like, um, I don't know, those things, like the orange sticks that stay in the ground?
One of those things, cool, that light.
Yeah, I don't know, the reflectors that they like bounce back when like a big truck drives in them, but they're, they're on, they're in the ground. You know what I'm talking about?
The reflectors on?
Yeah, yeah, exactly that, exactly that.
Bouncing reflectors?
Yeah, yeah, bouncing reflectors. Is that some, something that the board wants, and would this applicant be able to provide?
I don't think so.
Did your kids go to the daycare?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Okay, anyway, I'm not asking more questions about themselves. Is that, what's wrong with bouncing reflectors? Okay, well, mind us, what's wrong with bouncing reflectors?
I, I didn't know that, because then no one can get to the middle of the road. If emergency vehicles go by, they didn't stop, you know, so...
There was a shoulder, everyone goes on the shoulder, bouncing reflectors, I said, when the fire truck goes by, my parents live down the block, my parents live...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Firehouse.
Please, one at a time.
My parents...
Hold on one second. One at a time, you're asking a question, they're trying to answer, you keep talking. Just one at a time, okay? And, and also, don't ask the board questions. They're not here to be interrogated or cross-examined by questions.
Well, I have to make sure they understand what you're saying.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I know your questions are rhetorical in nature, but try not to ask them personal questions about whether they have kids at daycare, and I kind of think it's not...
Okay, yeah, I understand, that's been a long night. Um, what I'm trying to say is that my parents live down the block from the firehouse in Brooklyn. There are bouncing reflectors on the corner. When the fire trucks drive by, the bouncing reflectors, they bounce, and the fire truck is able to get through, and everything is fine, so...
Who was answering?
Right, again, if it's something that this board could recommend, that the county, you know, wants to do it, it's a county road, you know, don't have to get across the whole front, they just speak by the driveway, so people don't even think that they should try to go with them. Thank you. My wife is outside, I'm going, gonna...
Thank you. Okay, Brian, you ready to answer?
No.
Bouncing reflectors? I, I don't think we want to be the first bouncing reflector application. Maybe, maybe we can give some to our... Maybe we can give some to us, that could go in the next master plan.
Have you also called my team here, so you know I'm closing the public? Would ask for a motion on this application?
So I'll make a motion. September's stepping up, and we get that, and it's not so much a comment on your application. But I think we need what Jakey just did on his little iPhone, you know? I worked on a head start program years ago. Each little group has a certain amount of ratios. Let's just do the math, and let's do that, the technical review thing, we're just simple guys, we're not that smart. We need our geniuses to like go through the ordinance, go through each step, and then present us the analysis.
I, I want to point out that the applicant came with plans that said they only needed fourteen parking spaces. We didn't buy that, we actually backed into the twenty-seven, as I explained. And the testimony that we're hearing tonight, it sounds like we need more than twenty-seven. And nobody's really giving anybody numbers exactly what that is.
And that's really my point, that we were winging it tonight, and I think, I'll make the motion that we approve it, but.
We like it in future applications, that.
We, we need to do the analysis at the technical review stage, follow the ordinance, do the math, look up things, it's, it's not. I'm not busting on you, Dave, I'm just like.
It's unfair to the board to come and ask.
Yeah, and like, if there is a nightmare, yes, I get the point that you want to attract as many people, but you know what, maybe your budget's tight, so let's just put in an extra ten, let's put in an extra twenty, and all of a sudden Clover is a nightmare, and, you know, they're throwing darts at our faces.
So the motion is approved.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a second, another? I have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the application. And, Rock, please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flankfellow? Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer?
No.
Okay, motion approved.
Do you have to update the checklist? We move the daycares automatically down, the order makes it seem a valley, if like you didn't complete, they have a mission statement on a daycare.
And I, I've requested.
I can't really review that for advocacy to say you're quoting the correct standing. Mr. Stern, only yet, we've been in the building.
I think, I think most of your applications in town, or in the new lines for, for AMVOM, we certainly heard the loud and clear, and that'll be addressed earlier in the process.
Dave, I think on the future applications, your office should be aware of it, and should have some clarity on the amount of parking.
And if you don't, simply remind us, there's something, there's a, you have to, you have to. I read your problem with the class, if you do have a mission statement.
We, we are accustomed to reminding you of things that you know that's been.
Yeah. We try and get things to this board because we're all busy. Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have both. Motion second, all in favor, aye. We have any minutes?
Yes, I finished both from last week.
Both in second, all in favor, aye. Motion adjourned. Both in second, all in favor, aye.
Thank you. Do you have your, no, do I want? You got it.
I, I, I feel too strong.
No, don't feel that.
Okay. Because it's positive.
He submitted one of five things.
I'll make you, if you get up the public and say we did not have enough time to review this, we sent it to Mr. Nato, oh, you weren't here.
Yeah, at the parking day.
We covered off.
You know what?
Who said four nineteen?
Yeah. Okay, all right. You close.
I, I'll back you on that, Dave. They always.
So it's helpful, we'll back. Okay. I hope you'll let him know. Okay. This application was a problem. And I said, you know what? We should.
Okay, now should I let the board over?
Yeah. All right, your feelings?
No, not at all.
I don't know, right, your feelings?
I only have one.
What?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Thirteen, I think, for the Friday.
Ooh. Thank you, Ellen.
Have a good one.
Ellen, these directions, you need these?
Yeah. Thank you.
We have enough stuff.
As you know.
I knew that'd be a warm one tonight.
Yeah, no, not bad, I was like, I'm going to have a day thing.
I actually went too bad, I'm going to carry, I'm going to carry two.
Yeah, two, come on. Oh, the one that didn't notice, right?
Yeah. Which was better than you might have expected. All right. I'll see you soon.
See ya, thanks, Dave.
Yep, take care.
I have a big package.
You have it, Julian brought it?
Yes, so far, if you're old, we have.
So far, no?
No, it's New Jersey, so if you want to go with the baby next year.
No, I'm leaving.
Terry promised the baby coming.